Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Vlani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Vlani. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vlani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've now come to our public comments section. You may let us know what's on your mind and your heart on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Anything you're thinking about that you want us to know, this is the moment to do that. You have three moments to speak. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Council will not engage you in discussion, but it doesn't mean we don't care. If your matter needs follow-up, there's a table right outside this door where you may leave your contact information so that a member of council or city staff or a director can get back with you. Go. Okay. Closing public comments. Oh, wait, Ms. Mitchell, have you received any correspondence to be entered into tonight's record?
No, Your Honor, I have not.
Okay. Then we are closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the fortieth regular city council meeting on Monday, May 6, 2024, and the city council work session on Monday, May 6, 2024. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1398. Three, motion number M4624, matter of appointing Public Works Director Shawn Young as the city of Berkeley's representative, and Assistant Director of Public Works Adam Wozniak as the alternate representative to the southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, SACRA, Board of Trustees for the fiscal year ending on June 30, 2025, and instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACRA board. Four, motion number M4724, matter of appointing Public Works Director Shawn Young as the city of Berkeley's representative, and Assistant Director of Public Works Adam Wozniak as the alternate representative to the southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, SACWA, Board of Trustees for the fiscal year ending on June 30, 2025, and instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACWA board. Five, motion number M4824, matter of considering an update to the community development fee schedule. Six, resolution number R1224, matter of approving a resolution in support of House Bill 5696. Seven, proclamation number P724, matter proclaiming the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Eight, proclamation number P824, matter proclaiming May 12 through 18 as National Police Week. Nine, proclamation number P924, matter proclaiming June 2024 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Ten, proclamation number P1024, matter proclaiming June 2024 as Pet Preparedness Month. Eleven, proclamation number P1124, matter proclaiming June 2024 as Summer Safety Month.
Is there a motion to approve this robust consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Vlani with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vlani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations, matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Mayor Protem Gavin to read P0724.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas, the United States has witnessed an alarming rate of gun violence incidents affecting countless individuals and communities across the nation. And whereas, every day, 327 people are shot in the United States, and of those, 117 are killed by gun violence. And whereas, in an average year, there are 43,375 gun homicides, and Americans are 25 times more likely to die from gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas, Michigan has an average of 1,406 gun deaths per year with a rate of 14 deaths per 100,000 people. Michigan has the 28th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas, guns are the leading cause of death among children and teens in the United States. In the United States, an average of 3,963 children and teens die by guns every year, of which 33% of these deaths are suicides and 62% are homicides. And whereas, cities across the nation, including Berkeley, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas, mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas, National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is observed annually on the first Friday of June, was established to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to raise awareness about the urgent need for comprehensive solutions. And whereas, wearing the color orange has become a symbol of solidarity and a call to action against gun violence, inspired by the friends of Hadiya Pendleton, a 15-year-old who was tragically shot and killed in Chicago just one week after performing at President Obama's second inaugural parade. And whereas, individuals, organizations, and communities across the country come together on this day to advocate for stronger gun laws, promote community safety initiatives, and support survivors and families of victims. And whereas, education and awareness are critical components in reducing gun violence and fostering a culture of safety and responsibility. Now, therefore, the council of the city of Berkeley hereby proclaims, Section 1, that the first Friday in June, June 7, 2024, is hereby declared to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Berkeley. And by wearing orange on this day, citizens will help to raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Section 2, the city of Berkeley renews our commitment to reducing gun violence and pledges to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Section 3, the city of Berkeley further encourages all citizens to support their community's efforts and renew their commitment to preventing the tragic events of gun violence and honor and value human lives. Proclaim this 20th day of May, 2024, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense? Okay. In the event that there are, I just don't want to miss anyone if they were here. I have asked Councilmember Black to read P0824.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A proclamation of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming May 12 through 18, 2024, as National Police Week. Whereas, there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including dedicated members of the Berkeley Public Safety Department. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, 282 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 118 officers killed in 2023 and 164 officers killed in previous years. And whereas, the members of the Law Enforcement Agency of the city of Berkeley play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of Berkeley. And whereas, the dedication, professionalism, and commitment of law enforcement officers often go above and beyond the call of duty involving personal sacrifice and courage. And whereas, the work of law enforcement officers extends beyond traditional policing roles to include community outreach, education, and building relationships with citizens to foster trust and collaboration. And whereas, the men and women of the city of Berkeley Public Safety Department unceasingly provide this vital public service. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And now, therefore, the city of Berkeley hereby proclaims, Section 1, that the week of May 12 through the 18, 2024, is hereby recognized as National Police Week in the city of Berkeley, and publicly, we salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Proclaim this 20th day of May, 2024, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Bridgette Dean, Mayor, signed.
Thank you. And finally, I've asked Councilmember Patterson to read P0924.
Thank you. A proclamation of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming June 2024 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Whereas, the city of Berkeley strives to be an exceptional place to live, work, play, learn, grow, business, raise a family. And whereas, the city of Berkeley accepts and welcomes all people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas, the city of Berkeley supports the rights to every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas, the city of Berkeley is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all of its residents and further preventing discrimination, harassment, and bullying based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and the expression of both facets of an individual. And whereas, while we, our society at large, are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas, it's imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas, the city of Berkeley's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, asexual, and non-binary identifying community members are a vital part of our overall community and contribute to making it a stronger one. Now, therefore, the council of the city of Berkeley hereby proclaims, Section 1, that June 2024 shall be recognized as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Berkeley. Section 2, the city of Berkeley urges the residents, government agencies, public and private institution, businesses, and schools in the city of Berkeley to recommit to increasing our support and recognition of the contributions made by members of the LGBTQIA+ community and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. Proclaim this 20th day of May, 2024, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Signed, Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation of the Community Development Department's New Homeowner's Guide to Permits.
Good evening, Ms. Loomis. So happy to have you here.
Thank you.
And I'm excited about this permit guide. I mean, in a weird way, I just think it will help with communication and managing expectations and all of that, so.
Yeah, and I'm happy and privileged to be able to share it with you, Madam Mayor and Council. I hope the guide speaks for itself, but that being said, we thought it was prudent to introduce it to the community and kind of give a background and intent on what we hope its use will be. And I'll go into deeper detail. And forgive me, this is my first time with this remote, so we'll see what happens. So, as introduced, I'm here to talk about the homeowner's guide to permits. And I want to go into what the intent of, I don't know, what the intent of the guide is. There we go. So the intent is not to be an instruction book because home projects, construction operations, they're not one-size-fits-all. If everyone remembers back into the 80s, those choose-your-own-adventure books, I use those as an example very frequently because depending on what you do, you go from chapter four to chapter eight. Some choices can make it more difficult or more interesting, and you're in for every chapter, but then you skip the last one. And I feel like that's how construction projects are. I would love to say each bathroom renovation has step one, two, three, and four, but as anybody who's been involved in one, as a contractor or homeowner, knows that there's left turns, whether expected, anticipated. So that, again, the idea here is to demystify the process. So you, the homeowner, are able to ask the questions. Even if your project isn't exclusively called out in this guide, it's to outline the steps and to help you be inquisitive. And again, to encourage you to reach out to staff. We are here at the city of Berkeley as a full-service building component of the community and development department. So we are here, we are accessible. It's one of the benefits of being in a smaller town is that we can set time aside or even meet you at your home if you're really stuck and you want to make sure you're making a good decision. So, with that, I kind of want to walk through each individual section. So, again, permits. If you can think of it, and there's a 50/50 chance it's going to require a permit. If you're not sure, give us a call. Our phone number is in here, it's on the website. This will be on the website as well with its own landing page. Copies will be available by request, printed at City Hall. So if you'd like one, if you come to the building counter, we'll be happy to print a copy for you. With that being said, our permits. Garage, that's one huge project if you're not comfortable with construction, but maybe you could still use this guide for understanding what steps your contractor's taking or what questions to ask of them as they go to bid. Or it's very common when I'm on building inspections for homeowners to check in with me. Is my contractor meeting all their thresholds, all their guide points? It's helpful to manage expectations, especially, most home projects are a sizable part of your income or you're leveraging your equity. So we want to make sure it goes as smoothly for you, whether you're working with a contractor, but particularly in this scenario, when you're doing it yourself. Because asking the right question now and using 15 minutes of our time could be worth 1,500, 15,000, it can go on and on. So driveway and sidewalk, let's be honest. If you are not comfortable and you don't know the phrase "six-bag mix", you might be in over your head, but I'm happy to explain it to you if you're at the counter. We live in a very fantastic time with access to knowledge, so I want to make sure that I can guide you as much as the state of Michigan will let me. They will, we are not allowed as a building department and inspectors to tell you what to do. We're allowed to guide you to make the right decisions using approved methods. So if you bring me three different options, I can tell you which ones will work. Maybe it's all three, maybe it's none of the three. Okay. I'm not going to bore you by reading each one of those. You can all use your imagination, please. So I find that one of the very first thresholds where we get caught up because you had a great idea, we're going to do the kitchen, really excited about it, but I have no idea where to start. We wanted to demystify our plans and approval. I've gotten drawings on Ramshorn napkins. Not kidding, Ramshorn logos on the back, and they were decent plans. They answered all the questions I needed. I did have to photocopy it so I could stamp it, you know? With that being said, you don't have to always, unless the job legally calls for it, have an architect or be an architect. If you're not sure, again, that's what we're here for. If you don't know if you need a design professional, reach out to us. So getting your plans in, we're going to take them in, we're going to review them. This is a great time for us to go through and decide what kind of questions we need to ask of the applicant. Maybe there are items you missed. You're framing a wall, not a big deal, but you didn't say what lumber dimensions you're using or what your spacings are. Is the wall, what we call partition walls, and it's not carrying any weight or load? Or maybe it is. Do we know what it's supporting, what it's supported underneath? If you're making changes, this is where we might intervene and tell you, this is where you need an engineering professional. This is a chance for us to help set you up for success and make sure you're following all those code thresholds. After that, really kind of start getting into the good part. You're approved, and now I get to come over and inspect your work. Especially being thoughtful to homeowners. When I was in construction, it was easy. I would show up at your house at 7:00 a.m., I'd leave at 4:30 in the afternoon, and I had an entire day to work. You, as a homeowner, you're trying to knock it out after you get home. And if no one has soccer or dance, so maybe a 45 minutes, and then you have to feed everybody, and so now you're just trying to use your weekend to do this project. Maybe your permit expires. Permits are set to expire at six months, but with a written letter asking us for extended period of time, we are able to do that. But let's pretend we're made it far enough to get to inspections. That's one of the largest questions we get after, what do you need to know to approve my permit? Is what kind, when do I do an inspection? And this is a very tough question to answer broadly. It's much easier to, again, have that one-on-one time with the individual. But to kind of break it down, what we want to see on inspections. I'll use a brand-new shed as a good example. If you're pouring it on a pad, we'll need to see that you have a rat wall. We will need to see that if you're, where the dirt is, you're compacting it. We want to see the framing that you've used. Ensure that it's safe and it matches what your plans say. We want to see the roof. We want to make sure everything you did is what you said you did safely. And that sounds pretty straightforward, but how do you know when to have us come out? And that, again, I'll lean back. We have a great set of people working in our permitting department. You know, a lot of you have probably already interacted with them. If you haven't, I highly encourage it. We have a really great team in community development, and they're 100%, again, full service, here to help you be successful. The sole goal is to get your project safely done and on your timeline. And again, inspections, knowing when you need one, can be really, really difficult. So I want to say, like, this is one of the few times I'm going to break my rule and actually read the screen a little bit. I usually kind of push against that. But these are the four types of inspections that we want to see. Rough usually means we are in a rough state. The, where, everything is open. So in the case of a shed that is going to have electrical in it, the walls are open, there's no insulation up, and our electrical inspector can see all the wiring, switch boxes, every connection. After that, once our trades, our electrical inspector in this case is done, I'll come out, double-check your framing. If we have any notes, maybe they're the sort of thing you can fix today, and we can come back in the afternoon. Maybe we have to give you the dreaded red sticker, but that's okay because now you know what changes need to be made. You can call it in, and I'll come right back out. Best thing at Berkeley is I'm always eight minutes away from you, no matter where I'm at and no matter where you're at.
Like five blocks.
Insulation, this is always a tricky one because we're... Insulation, this is always a tricky one because we're a home with a, a, a city with a very varied, sorry for the redundancy, a varied housing stock. We have everything from 2024 to, I want to say 1920, 1921, I'm sure there's something earlier than that. So you will see a little bit of everything. Depending on the scope of your project, there's provisions that allow you to put back what was there within reason, without having to bring it to modern codes. Footing and postal, very common for homeowners on our, our decks and our porches. And then final, final is the best inspection because it means you're done and you can start doing the next project. So I gave inspection examples. I've provided a little bit of a truncated version with my presentation tonight, but I really want to lean on the first sentence that I put on this slide, which is, your project is, they're not all one size fits all. Even though your intention is the same, it's still a kitchen remodel, just like your neighbor next door. Different homes, different methods, different people who've worked on it before and different goals on your part will all change things. So maybe you don't need the inspection that your neighbor had. And again, I'll circle back. Call Angela, Kim, and Dana in our permitting department, they will have you covered, and I'm always happy to answer any questions that you might have. And again, this will be available online on the city's website, it will have its own landing page. Or if you prefer a hard copy, if you just come to the community development counter at City Hall, we'll be happy to print one for you. And if you, again, have any questions, I'm going to lean on this so hard, just reach out to us. We're, we're always here for you and very happy to, to serve and help you be successful. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Loomis. Is there any discussion from council?
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, this is great. Thank you very much. If a homeowner is hiring a contractor to do some work, who's responsible for the permit in that case?
The contractor would be responsible. So the permit holder, the person who obtains the permit, is the one who's responsible for executing and following through on all the individual steps. There are situations where maybe contractors disappear, go through bankruptcies. I, we, we have seen it, I would like to say all, as within reason. And if there is a need, there is a mechanism with LARA, which is the state regulatory board, where the Michigan Department of Building is located. If your contractor has been unable to finish the work that you had hired them for, there is that mechanism in there to have the state pursue them to close the permits.
So just as sort of a consumer protection, don't pull the permit yourself. It's maybe a red flag if your contractor is telling you to, for you to pull it.
Correct.
And confirm that they actually did.
Correct, yes. And, and this is where I have to be very thoughtful and say I'm a building official, not a lawyer. So pulling a homeowner's permit is your right through the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan believes and has for its entirety, nearly its entirety, that you have the right to repair and maintain your home, which in some cases is the only way that makes these repairs affordable and can help you stay in your home, age-in-place things that are incredibly necessary. But when pulling a homeowner's permit, if you do that on behalf, so you, the homeowner, pull your permit on the behalf of the contractor, you are always going to be responsible for all the work that that contractor performs on your home. You also, and you need to check with your homeowner's insurance policy, you, you might be responsible for any injuries they have on your, potentially have on your property while performing under the permit that you had pulled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you so much. This was really great, and this fills an information gap that I'm sure a lot of us have had as we've considered projects or taken those initial steps to, to, to make some positive improvements to our property and things. If someone were to have a question, what, what telephone number would you recommend that they call?
If you're looking for myself specifically, it is 248-35, oh, 658-3326.
326.
Or my city cell is 248-466-1350.
Great.
And my email's even easier to remember, buildingofficial@berkeleymiss.gov.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Of course, thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Baker.
I just want to thank you for putting this together. As my colleagues have said, it, it's very easy to read, very easy to follow.
Thank you.
I think a lot of our residents will benefit from something like this, myself included. So thank you for the time for putting this together.
Absolutely, thank you.
Councilmember Valani?
I also agree with my colleague's comments about how great this is. I live with a DIY engineer, and we've had to do several permitted projects on our home after purchasing it. And the first project had us running up to the City Hall, back and forth, back and forth, with one more schematic and one more of this. So I can see where something like this would have been super helpful to make sure that we had all of our ducks in a row coming up. So I think this is going to help a lot of people as they continue to rehab their homes in the city. Good work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Black?
For people that are new, so I love the, the new homeowner's guide, for people that are new to our area, obviously, I know there are things that you, you can and can't provide if they were, or do we keep track of, let's say, approved vendors, right? If I'm looking for a kitchen remodel, not that you can recommend one, but can you give them a list of vendors that have gone through our process, that, that are in good standing, things like that?
Yes, absolutely. And you said exactly what I, how I would have responded. We do maintain a list that is available at City Hall. Again, we make zero recommendations if, but what we do is we have a list of mechanical, electrical, plumbing, building, flatwork, people who've performed work consistently in the city and have successfully closed permits. Again, not one ever preferred over the other, it's just, it tends to be a list that's common. And again, if there's a contractor that would like to have their name included, it's a zero preferential list. We're, we're always happy to talk to anybody who has additional questions in that regard.
And there's zero fee to access that list for?
Correct. It is, yeah, it is available here at City Hall. We haven't put it online, I'm not sure if there's an intention to, but it will always be available, I can say conclusively, at the community development counter in City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would it be accurate to say regarding the permit, if the contractor pulls the permit, there's a fee involved with that, and that fee doesn't go back to the contractor until the final inspection?
A bond?
Bonds, yes.
Yes, it would depend on the type of permit that we're speaking of.
Okay.
One of, actually, on the consent agenda, one of our goals was to eliminate some of the lower amounted bonds that didn't perform in that way. But yes, if there is a bond required for a project, it would require that that project be complete per minimum code standards before that could be released. Once a bond is released, it could take up to six to eight weeks.
Okay, thank you. I also just want, final comments, I really appreciate the welcoming nature that your department and community development put forth to our residents and any building contractors that come in. You welcome questions, and you really just are putting your best foot forward in terms of helpfulness, and I really appreciate that. So thank you for this guide, and thank you for just the, the attitude with which you approach these kinds of things. I appreciate it.
Thank you. It's very thoughtful. Thank you.
All right, we good? Pretty good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's agenda.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation regarding the 2024-25 fiscal year City of Berkeley budget.
Carl?
I'm going to building, they're much nicer, and it's a nice place over there. Evil finance and evil city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So collectively, this is our first budget process here. Carl has a few months ahead of me. Tonight, what we're going to do is in a little bit of a different order than what I'm used to. I know Carl's probably done some different procedures where he's been at before, but the presentation we're going to give tonight is similar, and we put it together in a very tight timeline, so it's not exactly what I would normally do, but this is what I would do to kick off the budget process. Carl's going to have to take a lot of this tonight because he's been involved in this process from the beginning. So with that, as we go through this, please feel free to ask any questions as we go along. It's designed, it's an outline, there are some talking points to keep us on track, but we have this broken down by various funds. So if you do have a particular question on a fund, if you could save it till we get to that fund, it would be helpful. So first, just setting the stage, I always like to keep this in perspective. What you're looking at here is 10 years of the city's taxable value versus state equalized value. And the reason why I always like this slide is it's one of the best ways to demonstrate the impacts of HEVLY. And so what you're seeing here is, it doesn't work on this screen, what you're seeing is the total number is state equalized value, okay? Across the city is $1.8 billion. Am I reading that right? $1.8 billion of tax, excuse me, state equalized value in the city. We can only capture revenues on taxable value, which is less than half of that state equalized value. That's from the cumulative rollbacks every year on those tax dollars. Okay, budgets versus projections. Carl's going to walk through this. What we're going to do is we're going to start with where we ended last year with what we're looking at going through the current fiscal year. And one thing that we will note is our fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is right about where your policy is at. I think your policy's at 20%, so we're doing a little bit okay there.
Yeah, so this, this was spawned from the budget workshop as far as the amount I had in projected. So our projected 23-24 fiscal year. So I just wanted to point out, the, the top line there is our actual audited results from last fiscal year. The next line down is the original budget there at 630-24, so that was the one you passed before the fiscal year started. The amended budget, as it sits right now, is the third column that you see there, and then you, the last one down there is my projected. So the, the Budget Act requires the Finance Department to project where we think you're going to end up at the end of the fiscal year. And so looking at the amended budget when I got here, which was December, January-ish, we had an amendment done, I think, the very beginning of January, and that amendment took our change in fund balance there. You see, the original budget said we were going to be $50,000 to the good. Before our January amendment, or after our December amendment, it said we were going to dip into fund balance, that actually should be a negative $93,000. Before that amendment, we were 222 to the good. The amendment basically went through and adjusted all of the expenditure variances that were negative. So if, if we were over budget in any area, the amendment increased all of those amounts. What it didn't do was look at things like our self-insurance, where we were substantially under budget to the tune of more than $200,000. Same with the revenue side, to the extent we had favorable variances, those were included on the amendment. However, things like the, the marijuana licenses, the revenue sharing that we got from that, we, we assumed that we were going to have four, we only had two. So that was never amended down. So I just put this up there to get to highlight, you can see there, the revenues, the change in revenues from what I projected to what the originally was passed is about less than $100,000. On the expense side, it's actually less than our original budget was out there. Again, the primary thing being that our self-insurance costs are substantially under budget, which is a, a great thing. So again, the projection in the budget says, I think we're going to increase fund balance to the tune of 222, which is pretty much where we were before the December second quarter amendment. And, and again, the projected fund balance at that level is 26%.
Does everybody understand what Carl's saying here? What he's saying is that amendment that was done in January, for a lack of a better word, was incomplete. It only had half of the changes in that amendment. That's why there is this swing, if you want to call it that. It's not that any numbers were changed or anything like that, it's because of a reporting or an amendment that was done was incomplete.
Thank you.
Okay?
And I was going to reiterate that in another way. If we had used that January amendment, it would have been less accurate in our budget projections than what you did present to us in the budget.
That's exactly why I did not use it, yes. Because the goal with the budget document, the, the reason we projected is to give you another data set to compare to the budget that we're presenting for the 24-25 fiscal year. So if I would have used that other number, it's, it would have been $300,000 off of where I ultimately think we're going to be, and that's why I ultimately didn't go with it. Most of the time, if we're amending it properly and we're on top of that thing, that's the column we use. But that, obviously, you were used to that, and, you know, I didn't go by that again this year for that exact reason. So thank you.
Okay, some of the capital accomplishments last year that we just want to walk through because I think you're going to see a little bit of a contrast when we get into the 24-25 recommended budget. The City Hall reconfiguration was complete, I won't read all these. We did work on the Wiltshire Water Main and Pavement Program, new street sweeper was purchased, the Vector truck, which, this is unheard of, I've never seen this before, but we were able to sell our old Vector and recoup 85% of its value and invest that into the new Vector. So we were able to get some projects done, and we were able to begin the grant-funded HVAC project. A couple of big items that I always like to highlight is where we're at with pension and OPEB. These are huge numbers that have an impact on your ability to invest. What you see here, again, I'm not going to go through it all, but we, we have two different pension systems here. We have the Public Safety Pension Plan that is supported by the PA 350, 357, right, or 47?
345.
345, sorry. I thought I was going to get it. 345 Pension Village, this is just for our public safety officers. As you can see, when we closed out in last year's actuary, we were just over $1 million for annual determined contributions. We're funded just over 70%. As far as MERS, that 2023 number doesn't become available for another month or two, but as of last year, we were just under 50% funded. It's almost $1.4 million that goes into that pension fund. We were able to get the, the grant dollars from the state, but remember, that's one impact at one specific point in time. That, that should get us to 60%, but it doesn't mean we're going to stay at 60%. As far as, oh, go ahead.
Briefly, and since this happened before you were, either of you were here, you may not recall, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, if you know, the swings in our percent funded were not, you know, any sort of strange mismanagement or anything, it was changes in assumptions and actuarial assumptions.
Yeah, that was standard across all MERS communities. I couldn't tell, I want to say it was a half percent swing. It was a big swing that impacted every community in the state.
Particularly in '22, you see there, we lost one and a half million, almost $2 million in assets. Because they're December year-end, the market had rebounded by June, so a lot of the June 30 pensions did not show this type of dip. And so we expect that to dip back up in 2023 when we get the report in the month.
Actuaries are voodoo magicians.
Yes.
And then OPEB can even be even a, even a harder place to, to really get that voodoo to make sense. But again, OPEB, we have exceeded what we're required to do by law. We are pay, we are pay, excuse me, we pay as we go, but we're also putting additional into our OPEB trust. This is an area that we could potentially look at, but we don't want to necessarily stop doing what we're doing and working towards getting ahead, if that makes sense to you. Just because we've met the goal doesn't mean we should stop working to exceed the goal.
Correct.
So again, some of the things that, that Carl and I have heard since we've been here, the way the 2023 village played out and the changes that followed that, changes in leadership, changes in city management, that all equals more questions. And so I'm going to ask, well, I can walk through this part, I think- I think it's the other stuff that comes later that Carl's going to be needed for. But some of these things that were changed after that Milage that have caused some questions was the elimination of the monthly chipping for private residential branches, the return of the yard waste tags, reduced snow and ice removal program for seniors, which I was shocked to even hear you had something like that. I'd never even heard of that. And then reduced hours at the library. Again, new folks, different approaches. Carl's got a lot of years of experience. He's been through it, he's seen it, he knows how to do it efficiently. So he's going to walk through just some of the changes that he made in putting together this 24... Excuse me. I guess, yeah, 2425 budget.
Yeah, so I know we went over this in the workshop, but again, I think it's worth reiterating. When I got here and looked at your budget document last year, the line item one, the first thing that council people say to me who are non-finance people is, what the heck is this? You know, 70 pages of line items, you know, I didn't sign up for this. So as part of simplifying and really just getting to the level that we actually adopt the budgets at, that's what drove me creating that new document. So it wasn't to show you how nice and pretty I can make these 40 new pages that I hate making anyway because it's just 40 more pages. But it's really worthwhile because it's the... Specifically, the number pages tell the story on a departmental basis and simplifies. It gets rid of all the line items. Line items are always there. They're there for you to look at and sleep on and all that kind of good stuff. But really, it's just simplifying it. And then start adding, I call it the fluff. So the policies and all of the other things in there. I've prepared them that are 200, 300 pages long, and I've prepared budgets that are like five pages long. You know, it really just depends. And I think it's got you excited a little bit because I think we're going towards more pages. And again, but it's all there. It's what do you want? What is important? What is the story we like to tell? The numbers are always going to be the numbers, but it's explaining them and taking the opportunity within that document so that I can talk less and more can be conveyed in there to our residents as well as yourself. So the approach, again, was taking your last year. So you... Right now, you pass a two-year budget. One year you pass, the state won't let you pass more than one. You adopted two, but one, you know, is in play, and the other one, again, they kind of go in conjunction. I took that exact budget, started with that, and then just went through line by line and made a projection of where I thought we were. Then we went to the department heads and said, that crazy finance guy who just got here talks very fast, he put all these numbers in here. Would you please take a look at them, being the experts, and tell him if you think any numbers need to be changed? So we utilized BSNA to its fullest extent. So literally, they didn't have to recreate all the numbers. They only had to go in there and tell me what numbers they wanted changed, and we discussed any differences, and we amended accordingly. So that's how the budget document itself was created. That's how the numbers came up. Started with what you had approved last year, and then again, made some tweaks. In a fiscally constrained city like ours, we don't have a whole lot of crazy new development, all these new revenues per se. We're pretty boring, for lack of a better word. As far as, you know, we have the same number of people, 70% of our budget, as you'll see here, is people. We're pretty boring as far as that stuff goes. There's not a lot of frills. There's just a small piece of capital, which again, we'll show you there. But that is really the approach that we took. Shaved off a good month in this process. And again, to me, this was the start. This was a taste of something new. I think it was well-received. And as the city manager is going to point out here, while continuing that, I think in our workshop today, he was mentioning, you know, getting another tool and continuing this process.
So, questions on last year? Or I guess it'd be this current year, before we get into 2425? The actual item that's on your agenda this evening? Yes?
Thanks. This was very helpful context, and I appreciate the work that you've done to bring this to us in such a clear and focused manner. And just as a point of just clarification or assumption here, you mentioned earlier, there's a one that's at $90,000, it was supposed to be a negative $90,000. I'm hopeful that that would be corrected before this is posted.
That's just the slide.
Right.
That's just the slide. Our budget shows negative $90,000.
Understood. And people look at the slides. So if we can have the slide reflect, you know, that, I just think it would help tell the story that we mean to convey.
My guess is somebody's changing it right behind you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Fiscal year 2425. So a couple of years ago, I moved to pie charts on this because it's easier than trying to hand-do the whole dollar bill thing. So this tells the same story. The point here is, you come to the city, you give us a dollar when you pay a tax bill. If you're a resident, PRE exemption, we keep a whopping 43 cents of that tax dollar. That's not very much. It's even smaller if you're a commercial property owner as a percentage because you're paying more on those, the state school aid fund. But so often we say, oh, I have this massive tax bill. It doesn't all go to us. That's the main point. So just some content. You know, what's a little bit of the context behind revenues? Property taxes increased 5% the maximum. That was pretty consistent across the state of Michigan. It's capped there by Headley. It cannot go up any higher than 5%. State revenue sharing, despite all the money the state had, we got... We received 2% of an increase is what we're assuming. It might come in a little bit higher. I think they're still in budget negotiations, if I remember right.
That's their current estimate on their website.
Okay. Marijuana revenue, we are projecting that we will have at least a third license online by the time the timeframes are for the distributions for the following year. So we're not going to see all five licenses in this 2425 budget. Act 51 increase of 5%, that's per MDOT's estimates. Again, for those that are not aware of what Act 51 is, when you go to the gas pump and you pay the taxes on your gallon of fuel or you're paying your registrations, that's what's going into this fund right here, or those dollars. We do have a little bit more in ARPA that we need to get spent down. There is no special assessment revenue projected this year because we've taken a break from the sidewalk program, and there's no change in solid waste rates this year. We've already kind of... Yes?
Hi, quick question on that, on the marijuana revenue sharing. I remember when this was first approved by the voters, and then when we went through the process of establishing the licenses, there were some in our community that were very excited about the prospects of having this revenue to do things that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do, like build a new community center and things like that. Could you help us put into perspective, like, the 150 that we're estimating? Would that afford us a new community center?
No, marijuana is not the magic fix-it with revenues. Could you build a new community center with it? You could potentially theoretically bond over a long period of time and get a community center out of it, but that negates all the other needs that those dollars are meant to go towards. Roads, well, this is not just the city, but the state dollars, roads. Presumably, there's a cost to public safety. That's what some of those dollars are meant to go for. But no, even... There's no windfall here. Even at all five, we're talking roughly 250. Again, theoretically, you could bond for it. But this is the word of caution I give every community. We've already seen saturation across the state. Yet we're building more and more licensed facilities, and more and more communities are bringing these facilities online. The more facilities, as the market stays stagnant, those payments are going to decrease. We've had this... Other community I was in had 16. Those 16 are not going to be there forever, and they are also not going to be bringing in $50,000 all year long. This is not money we want to be trying to make long-term investment decisions by. This is, I hate to say extra, but this is project money. This is not operations money. At least, that's the way I would look at it, if I were in your shoes.
Yes, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Okay, so we hit on this already. I asked Carl to put this together. We didn't put the percentages in here, but we wanted to show you the cumulative effect of 10 years of Headley rollbacks. In 10 years, we've had a rollback every year except for one. And if you were to go back and say, okay, so what did we not collect had Headley not existed? That would have been a cumulative impact of over $1 million. What could this community have done with $1 million? And again, that's separate from the whole state equalized value, taxable value conversation earlier. But what you can also see here is how that's impacted our solid waste fund, solid waste, and then also your infrastructure milage that's still relatively new. You're collecting cumulatively over the last five years, you've collected $100,000 less than when those voters first put that milage and said, we want you to collect two mills and fix our streets. Well, the state law says, no, we're not going to collect your two mills that you said we could do. We're only going to collect, was it 1.8% or something like that? That adds up over time, especially when we start talking about capital later and we're talking about the inflationary increases. Revenue by source, again, like most communities in the state of Michigan, property taxes are our number-one place that we receive them. Again, an oddity this year and probably your last couple of years is ARPA or federal dollars and other state resources. So that would get... That'd be like state shared revenue. I guess we did lump all those together. So not every year is that pink, I guess, color going to be that large of a piece of the pie. Okay, now, let's look at some context when it comes around expenditures. We used a assumption of 3%. A lot of the increases that you gave previously, those are in this current fiscal year. Going forward, we're back to the more standard 3% for non-union. Our self-insured healthcare costs were lower than expected, but we're still currently expecting 7%, at least for right now, until we have more numbers coming in. The new facilities department, you're going to have to explain this one. I know what it's saying, but...
Yeah, so remember, we talked about in the budget session. The goal with the new department was to get costs out of the library, City Hall, Public Safety, and DBW that the directors in those departments have nothing to do with. It's our facilities personnel that have the knowledge, and they're the ones that oversee the expenditures related to those. So it just made more sense to pull them out of those departments and get in there. Not to try to screw you guys up, and to, you know, that shifty finance guy again, but that was the purpose of it. And so now, there's a four or five different accounts that are all pooled into that one area for that department head to manage. And the other department heads are like, you know, thank goodness it's not in my department because I didn't know what it was anyway. They always want to steal it, but they didn't want to, you know, deal with it.
Whenever you're making a funding change or like a change in how you document something, you're always going to get claimed for doing the smoke and mirrors thing. I've heard it all kinds of different places that I've been. Long-term, what this move does is it helps you better account for spending within the actual use of those dollars. So it'll all play out over time once that history is there. But when you first make that change, yes, it's going to cause questions that we will do our best to answer.
Hey, one second.
Yes?
For that piece, again, thank you so much. I do think this was a positive step forward in the way that we can tell the story. We had talked about narrative earlier. And I think having this kind of thing, it makes it more clear exactly where and how we are investing in our facilities and so that we, as a council and as our community at large, can make those determinations to say, this needs the repair, right? Because we can have a track record of the amount of investment that we're able to make or not into a given facility. And so by pulling it out of the different departments, it helps bring greater transparency to the state of our physical infrastructure from a facility perspective. So I think this is a significant step forward. And as you said, it's not a thing, it's just geography. The money was being spent anyway. It's just now you can see it in one space as opposed to spread across all these other accounts, so.
And just keep in mind, that's going to be for your operating and non-capital maintenance. Capital is still going to be in your capital improvement fund. Did you have something else you want to add? Okay. What's the next one? What are you trying to say?
Well, operating costs, historically, your operating costs are 1% to 3%. Inflation, obviously, is a little more than 3%. So, you know, just letting you know, we did take that into consideration. And some were higher, some were lower. You know, some are still 1% or, you know, 0%, but most of them are up a little more than they historically have been. So just letting you know, we did take that into consideration.
So we didn't take, I think what Carl's saying, what I think is important here is, we didn't just say it's 3% inflation across the board. Carl went through and looked at the type of expenditure and adjusted appropriately based on the inflation estimates for those particular categories. We're investing all the dollars we can on major and local streets, but we're not really accumulating dollars for big projects. Similar case on the infrastructure fund. This unfunded lead line thing is a problem. And if you happen to see the article in the Detroit News, it was a red flag that you need to be calling your legislatures because the state is saying they have $225 million extra dollars. So there's a good idea right there. Let's fund some lead line replacement. Okay, expenditures by percent. Carl hit the main point. We are a service business. This is not a for-profit. This is not a place where we sell gizmos and gadgets. We are a service provider to provide services that requires people. That is why 70% of our budget is all people. That leaves very little left for everything else, for capital and all that. And again, the last thing I would just reiterate here is, again, we're only talking about the general fund right now. Okay, capital. Any questions on the general fund before we move into capital? Okay. So here's the big context that I think gets lost in conversations. Since COVID, on average, when you take all your infrastructure-related things, labor, concrete, asphalt, pipe, brick, all those things, on average, you put all those things together, and we've been seeing inflation at 40% to 50% more than pre-COVID. Think about that for a minute. You might have been able to do a street and maybe even some underground work for $1 million and do a nice, good stretch of street. But now, that same amount is $2 million. Again, think about when you went to your voters in 2018, I think it was, for the Capitol Milage, what you said you could do with those numbers. You're now, since COVID, are only able to do half of what you thought you'd be able to do. Then, add on top of that, the lead line replacement requirements. How much is left over? Not much. Okay. Revenues going into the capital. We kind of hit on this earlier, but here you can see where the milage has gone. We only went back five years, but you originally approved, I believe, it was two mills in 2018. We're down to 1.8334. So with those rollbacks, you're not keeping up with inflation. Because remember, inflation, let's say theoretically were, we were keeping up. We're capped at 5%. Costs have increased 40% to 50%. There's a big gap there. Expenditures. This is all that there is in your capital improvement budget this year, fits in this little chart right here. We have some wall and roof repairs. There's our water line replacement, some road paving, and some street work. Remember, some of that, I don't think it's reflected here, but remember, we had to put a project on hold because of underground conditions did not warrant a mill and overlay. It's a total reconstruct, which we suspect there's a lot more of that out there. We do have some equipment that's being replaced there to help us continue to provide the services we provide. There is some bacon park pavilion repairs and restoration. There's some parks equipment that we went through at the work session. Public safety, again, that's all standard practice, car replacement and what have you, with some renovations to their locker room and fitness area, which if you've never had the pleasure of visiting those, check it out. You'll understand why the investment's there. And then we have the parking lot repairs at the library. Again, I want to hit on a point real quick on the library parking lot because it came up in the work session, and I know that this gets recorded. I just want to say it again. We got... We received the question, why are we investing in the library lot and not the parks lot or the community center lot? The reason we're investing in the library lot is to keep the library lot from turning into the community center lot. That community center lot is a total reconstruct. Library is a rehab. The point there is, we want to spend the dollars at those key maintenance intervals so that we don't end up with like we have at the community center lot. At a certain point, when you have limited resources, you're better off just letting the stuff fall apart and keep the other stuff that you can maintain, keep that maintained. Unfortunately, that's just kind of the triage that we have to go through right now. Questions on the capital fund? Okay, utilities fund. We've been averaging about 120 lead service lines a year. Remember, that's roughly $1.25 million that we have to budget. We're only replacing about a half-mile water main a year. We try to align our water main projects with our road projects. We try to align our water main projects with our road projects. We're trying to optimize those dollars. The last thing we want to do is reconstruct the street, then have to go back five years later and replace a section of water main because it keeps breaking. We, uh, continue to budget, um, lining. Lining is one of the best dollars you can spend in your utilities fund because you're essentially putting in new pipe at a fraction of the cost. Um, we've been able to line, uh, 50% of our system over the last 20 years, so we still have a long ways to go. This is the, this is the big kicker right here. This like blew my mind, uh, when Sean gave this to it, gave it to us. At our current rate of water main and road replacement, it'll be 100 years before every pipe and road segment in this community has been replaced. 100 years and think about how old some of your oldest segments of water line and streets are right now. Lead and copper rule. I'm not going to go into this a whole lot. We talked about the 1.25 million. The scary part here is the EPA is looking at adjusting its requirements to where if they adjust them to, I think, changing the threshold to 15 parts per million of lead, we will be forced to accelerate our, um, program, essentially doubling our program. I'm not going to say the B word, but it's not sustainable. We can't keep that up and keep our other infrastructure in, uh, in working order. I will not take the opportunity to step on my soapbox on that, but if somebody else would, you're welcome to. Councilmember Henan.
Yeah, if people wonder why their water rates are
Right.
growing so fast, it is largely the, I think entirely, um, this, um, unfunded state mandate.
Hundred percent.
I also, if I can add, I, um, toured a Gliwa site today, um, Director Flora was with me and Director Young. And just looking at all the thing, and I'm going to talk about it in my communications later, but every single thing that's done to our water before it got, you know, when it goes from the river to the municipality, so many things that happened to it to make it clean and safe. And one of the things we talked about today were the lead line replacement. I mean, I, Congresswoman Stevens was standing right next to me and don't think I didn't bend her ear about that because I did. And it's not just Berkeley, it's every surrounding municipality. We all are struggling with this unfunded mandate. But communities like Berkeley, we're just either not wealthy enough or not poor enough. We're, we're squeezed in the middle. And I made that point to her as well. Yes, Director Young has applied for, um, grants to help with the funding of this, but it, it's not going to be enough. So there's the rest of the soapbox.
The, the, I'll add one more piece to your soapbox.
Yeah, go.
The, the, the challenge that communities are faced with here is we're being forced to spend enterprise dollars, utility fund dollars on private infrastructure. This is the only place that I can think of where a city operation is required to spend money on private property.
Right.
Nowhere else are we, do we do that.
I'll add one more thing. When I first started on council, our water fund was self-sufficient, had a very healthy, uh, reserve balance. And then this year, it will be down to zero.
I totally understand why it has to get done. Nobody wants to be drinking lead water. State could have looked at some other ways to do this, probably could have thought through it a little bit more. It was, it seemed to be very reactionary. Fine with reactionary, but take the time after you react to go through and make sure, is this going to actually work? And if not, how else can we do that and meet the same goal? Now we should definitely step down from the soapbox. Um, okay, residential water and sewer rate. Um, even after all that, the total picture here is actually not. It could be a lot worse. Um, I'll have Carl walk through this more because the way water rates work and the way you average it all out, it's, it's more of a finance thing than, than a me thing. Um, so go ahead, Carl, and, and walk us through how this all adds up at the end of the day.
Yeah, sure. So the, you, the normal or the average residential customer has those four components up there. Again, I didn't bring stormwater into the equation. Uh, you have your water service fee, your sewer service fees, those are variable. Those are based on the amount of units you use. So that's turn the faucet on, you get billed for it. That's what those are. And then there's the ready to serve for both water and sewer. Those are fixed fees. So when we looked at the water and sewer rates this year, and what you talked about last year was a 10% increase last year in the variable rates as well as continuing that again in the current year. So the top two line items there, uh, were increased by the 10%, the variable rates. But no changes to the fixed rate doesn't mean that your bill goes up 10% because two-thirds of your bill is fixed. That doesn't change. So only the variable rate changed. So that's where you get, this is a single unit there. So if you just looked at a single unit, uh, it's only a 2.75, again, only a 2.75. But it, it's a 2.75% increase. So when we talk about a 10%, you shouldn't expect to see a 10% increase in your water bill. Okay, because of, again, that mix of variable versus fixed.
And that'll be different in everybody's bill depending on how much water you actually use. Okay. Water and sewer capital. Um, again, we have our annual lead line replacement related road paving. Um, we have our annual sewer lining. We have, uh, um, replacement equipment to try to keep our, our, um, water and sewer maintained. And then we have our annual water meter, water valve, manhole and hydrant replacements. Period. That's it. Cost of water. I always like to tell this story. I actually made them change this slide so I could really get the point across. A gallon of city water costs you practically nothing. When you compare that to a gallon of distilled water from Meyer, you're just over a buck. Um, you start to look at a bottle of Dasani. If you were to buy enough bottles of, of Dasani to get a, actually, no, that's just for the bottle. Sorry, that's not even a gallon. We should have put that as a gallon. And then now you really start to look at an iced latte at Starbucks. So water here is practically free when you compare it to other consumer products that you use to quench your thirst. Okay, solid waste fund. Any questions on utilities fund at this point? Okay, solid waste fund. This is the fund that, uh, is used to capture the costs attributed to refuse, recycling, yard waste and curbside leaves. I'm going to ask Carl to, to talk about this one because he's got a little bit more of the history of how this fund has come to be and, um, the changes that came about following 2023. Let's go to the next one.
So a lot of the discussion in our workshop was centered around this internal service fee that we talked about there. And actually, which way is down? I'm going to go even more. I'm going the wrong way. I'm going the wrong way.
It's the only slide.
No, this one.
That's the one you want?
Yes. Um, so the, the, no, it's not the right one. I'm sorry. I'm all, right here. So when we talk about internal service, what we're referring to is an administrative cost that is an allowable charge from our general operating fund to these restricted funds. Okay? So we modeled our budget based on the 10% rule, which is what the state of Michigan Department of Transportation uses, which is what the federal government uses for grants, which is what Oakland County uses for their grants, et cetera. They put a cap of 10% on the amount of administrative charges that you can charge to one of these special funds. Because as you know, the solid waste collections, that, that taxes we collect is restricted for that purpose, water and sewer restricted for that purpose, et cetera. So it's important to understand where that comes from. So this isn't Carl making this up. This is a standard that's well-used or well-known out in the industry. So again, the streets, the, we also use it for our pension. We also use it for DDA, which I'll show you there in a minute. So that's what that charge is. That charge is set annually. So the 10% is the maximum amount that can be levied on these funds. And it's interesting, I went back to see the, the history here. And so I, I looked at the solid waste fund. And in 2017, so the, again, the theory is, in the second bullet there, this is the city clerks, finance, legal, treasury, communications, IT, community promotion, promotion, city manager, anybody who spends time on those other funds. So again, south, think about solid waste. Treasury collects the property taxes. The clerks got to post the notice. We have the budget. We have the audit. We have all kinds of chart, all kinds of different activities. On my timesheet, I don't say, oh, I worked on rubbish fund for this hour today, out here or there. This is a, we do an annual look at these things. And again, keeping the maximum in mind. So when I looked back here, it was interesting, in 2017, in the solid waste fund, it had line items called city manager, finance director, DPW director, finance staff, treasury staff, building staff, library staff. Literally every single one of the departments was a line item on here. And then in 2018, somebody got smart and said, wait a minute, why don't we just consolidate all these together and just do an analysis of what it is? And that's when the internal service labor admin started. Okay? And so from 2018 on, it's been a single line item in these five funds, which I'll show you. So when we looked at the costs, major and local streets, again, set by the state of Michigan Department of Treasury. So that is the maximum amount and we allocate the maximum amount. And you can see there, there's the history there. We finally, and actually I think it was a surprise that we could levy up to the 10% uh, just recently, but it's, the key there is if you look at 2024, that's our existing budget. So the proposed budgets, uh, for the new year, the 2425 year, we're not changing the allocation. We're saying the 10% max for both major and local. The solid waste fund, it's the current budget is 192,000 in there, the budget year we're in right now, passed by council. We're saying, keep it at the same, the water and sewer unchanged. And then what we, the general rule of thumb for public safety pension and DDA is, we're basically, they don't have, they don't cut their own checks, they don't make their own deposits. We do pretty much everything for them. So those are really just minimal charges to acknowledge the fact that we do all their record-keeping for them and we do their audit for them, et cetera. So there's no way we'll get anywhere close to the 10%. And the same with water and sewer. That's at around 5%. A-again, a lot more revenues in the water and sewer one. And when you actually look at actual cost allocated to it, we, we come nowhere close to the 10% and that's what we allocate there. So that's where those come from. Um, when you look specifically at the wastewater fund, which I think is, I skipped it, see, there it is. So a question came up about where did this come from? Why, you know, this seems like a big amount per se. So what the actual, what's actually been happening is, again, this charge is set by mayor and council based on revenues. Remember, think about your budget. How do you set your budget? How many, how much revenues do I have? What are my expenses? And that's the premise of putting the budget together. When we put it together in the other years, before we adjusted our rates, we had the commercial charge and the bag and tag, I call it, or the stickers or whatever it's called. Um, before we had those, our revenues, if you looked at 10% of the revenues, they were much smaller. Our revenues were much smaller. But even then, we didn't charge up to the 10% because we couldn't. We could not charge that. And so where did that other 44,000 and 35,000 go? Back to the general fund because the rubbish fund couldn't afford it. We were incurring those costs, but we couldn't charge them there because there just wasn't enough revenue to charge there. So once our revenues were adjusted, again, we got back up to the normal 10%. Uh, again, it wasn't even quite 10%, but the normal 10%. And the proposed for the next year, the, the 2425 year is to not increase that. So again, we could charge an additional 11,000. We chose to keep it the same. Because again, based on the existing costs of the departments that provide the support, that's the amount, the number that was warranted. So where we think we're charging, what, that's the fair amount to charge to that fund. So I hope that helps explain what it is and how, how it is. And again, it's not, we're just, oh, solid waste has a bunch of new charges there before we can do it. This is actual costs incurred in the general fund that are allowable to be charged here and should be charged. They really should be charged.
It's where they belong.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I was going to repeat it to make sure that, uh, understand that, um, general fund was subsidizing solid waste. We were, um, uh, undercharging and to cover those costs, we're paying for things out of general fund. And then that also led to, um, the maximum that we could do for administrative costs, even if they were higher than, um, what we had. Uh, we weren't able to capture that. Uh, and then, you know, we add bag tags. That also is resource-intensive and, um, is going to be increased administrative, uh, costs as well to manage those programs. So it's a confluence of factors that led to what looks like a big increase, but is really right sizing where, what, where the actual expenditures were coming from and should have been allocated from.
And let me just say this in, in another, in another way. There's nothing new here. This 192,000 was here before Carl even got here. This was done your last budget approval go-around. That's point one. Point two is, okay, we just picked up on this. We want to go back to 2022. Say, city council said, okay, yep, we're going to go back to what we did in 2022. You're going to need to tell us, okay, where are we going to take those dollars from, from the general fund? Because we already just kind of went through and showed you, we're pretty lean. We're not investing in any capital or what have you. So if we're, if we want to go back to what we were doing a few years ago, then we have to look at cutting elsewhere. Again, going back to the summary that the mayor just gave. This is charging administrative dollars to the fund where the activity is occurring. And that's what our current finance director continued from what was done last year, when that adjustment was made.
And, and just as a quick note, uh, am I right in, uh, in understanding that the change from 24 to 25, uh, looks flat from an absolute value? But there are, uh, are inflationary pressures that are being, um, that this doesn't account for, right? So this, the 192 from last year is different than the 192 from this year because of the inflation and the costs and labor and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, correct. And again, part of the reason we kept it the same was, I think it's the, what, the curbside leaf pickup? The, the department, we expanded that back up again. So that was the priority versus getting another 11,000 for the administrative fee.
Right.
So again, 11,000 is not going to bankrupt the general fund, but 11,000 goes a long way into the leaf, the curbside collection program. So that was the priority. That's why it stayed the same.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. So one, um, the 10% rule, is that just our city's rule or a rule? I know Act 51 has specialized funds like this one is as well. So are we taking this fund to supplement the general fund? Because that's what I've heard.
No. So again, that's, that's what I was trying to point out. This is, these are actual costs in those departments that I listed out here. So the.
And do you have the breakdown of that? That's what I asked for, um, quite a while ago, to the breakdown, like, you know, city manager, 10%, um, city clerk, 20%, just so we can have it. Because it did jump up considerably when they combined them from eight years ago.
Yes, so that can be prepared. I did not prepare that. Again, this was, as Nate pointed out, that was the allocation that was there. So that's how those are created. It is, we do that spreadsheet and we come up with the actual costs, yeah.
And so when was that spreadsheet reviewed then? Was that?
Uh, usually it's every other year or so. You know, like I say, there was no change there, so I didn't have to go back and review it. I know costs went up, so, and I know the 10% cap.
So the cost is based on just regular staff increases?
Yeah, so remember, it is, it is the second bullet there. I, what we do is look at the clerks department and say, clerks department, how much of your time do you spend on refuse-related things? And so it's 10%. If the clerk's office expenditures went up 10% this year of $20,000, 10% of that would get allocated to the refuse fund. That's, that's how it works. But since there was no change, there's no, there was no reason to go back and.
Right, so I was just, that was kind of the detail I was looking for. I thought I gave that direction, um, in the work session in my emails and two weeks ago, so.
Well, remember, that direction's got to come from council. And we can.
Though, I mean, we asked for, it's fine, we, um, can agree to disagree how it was asked, but that was the detail that I thought we were asking for, to see it, to make sure that these are, I don't want to say accurate because I'm not discrediting what you do. I'm saying that these funds are spent how they're supposed to be spent. So 10% is our magic number, but what if we only needed 5% or 8%? Then we're, we're using these tax dollars for something that they aren't intended to be collected for.
Yeah, I can, an analysis was done to, for the 192 a year ago.
Sure.
And I, it costed and did nothing but go up. So I, I am 100% comfortable that even if I had to create one from scratch, it would.
Yeah, that's why, you know, because we even made the joke two weeks ago that it was, might be on a filing cabinet or something. So that's kind of the napkin sketch, you know, I, I'm not asking you to get down to the penny because I don't know if that's realistic. But just with our new system, I thought we could calculate easier and more accurately.
Oh, yeah, like I say, very comfortable, I've been doing this for 35 years, very comfortable with those and I think I can, I could justify double. You know, but that, that's how comfortable I am that, you know, we're, we're good with them. But again, if that's something, if it's a directive to come up with that detail and give it. But again, if that's, if it's a directive to come up with that detail and give it to you, we can definitely do that.
So and when we get through this, I want to make sure that directive comes clearly from council, because it's not that I disagree with what council member Patterson is saying, but there is different ways that that can be interpreted. And I know we've had some folks in the community that have asked for some very detailed information. What gets put together in a study like this is not going through and counting every second of every day, because we'll spend more time trying to account for our time. So if, if we're going to be asked to bring something back, I'm totally fine with that. Just be very clear on what the expectation of the staff is. Because to go through and try to account for every minute of everything that everybody does, typically when a community, or even if you hire a professional to do a full-on cost allocation study, they're using educated guesstimates.
Sorry, can I, I don't know who's first.
Go.
But was, I wasn't asking for the second play-by-play of what every staff member in the office does. I was asking for the ballpark figures. When I compare them to the other cities, we are higher. I compared them to several cities, bigger, smaller, and our 821,000 in these internal services are extremely, you know, sometimes double, sometimes less, but they had it broken out. That's just what I was asking for, similar to what it was in 2008.
And I totally appreciate what you're saying, council member Patterson. But I want to make sure that if we're going to be asked, that all of councils on the same page, that that standard that you just so clearly articulated is exactly what everybody is expecting, so that we don't bring that back. And then another council member says, there's not enough detail here.
And just remember too, before we leave that, this is dictated by council annually. So you could tonight say, we need more money in the water and sewer fund. So that 400,000, I don't want anything allocated to the water and sewer fund. So that cost goes back to the general fund, we use fund balance, or we find a way to cover it, we reduce costs or whatever. And so when you call up another place and say, you know, what's your allocation in the water and sewer fund? It could be zero, you know, or it could be a lot more. It really just depends on the priority. So like City of Novi example, they, they don't charge an administrative fee to any fund anywhere in the city. They say, every dollar I have for streets, I want in the streets. Every other dollar I have in water and sewer, because their general fund can support it. They have all that new property tax growth, et cetera. So it's, it's very hard to match that. That's where that 10% rule comes in. That is the, that's, it's like a state guideline that, that's a grants used, the county uses, the state uses, et cetera. So I never try to go over the 10, that is my max. But you can see, we're only allocating 5% to the water and sewer fund, because again, we don't have the cost to support 10% in the water and sewer fund. But again, it's still at this counter, at the dais. That numbers can be anything you want. We just have to know that, you know, any reductions impact the job.
Council member Henan, and then council member Valani.
Yeah. I'm going to reiterate what Mr. Johnson just said, because it was the point I was going to say, that these calculations are being made. And that's why, if you look at the internal services summary, we're only the 5%, 5.4%, 4.4% for water and sewer, because we don't need the 10% there. So these calculations are being made.
Council member Valani.
I'm going to try and be cautious with my words here, but I think where some of the frustration that I share with council member Patterson on some of this, and where some of the confusion is from some of our residents, is that they want to understand, we want to understand the bigger picture, the story, and some of the nuances. Especially considering that we came to the city last year, and we asked for a millage saying, hey, we need more money to keep things operating. And our residents push back on that. And as good stewards of the budget of the city, when we've come asking for more money, I know Greg, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn for Greg, but we've talked about this, like, we feel that we owe the residents some of that due diligence to continue painting this picture of, here's where we are, here's where we'd like to go, but like, here's that gap. And we don't feel we have enough of that information to tell the story, knowing that at some point, there is a likelihood, whether it's one, three, five years from now, that we may need to consider asking for a millage. And we don't, I don't feel that we have enough of that information in our hands to truly go and say, hey, here's where we are, we've got our i's dotted, our t's crossed, and this is what we need from you now. And it's echoing just what Greg said. It's not that we don't believe that things aren't being done well, or that they're being mismanaged, we just want to understand the story better of how it's put together.
So I think the missing piece is the, you know, I just talked about, there was a calculation made for, you know, how did we get to the $400,000 for water and sewer, for example? You know, so spreadsheet or somewhere done this year or last year. I think, I think that's probably what we're looking for. And I, that's all the farther detail I'm willing to ask for. I'm not looking for us to then go to the clerk's office, well, how did you come up with your number? And so on. Just take, you know, the worksheets that we already have, that's the level of detail that I think is a reasonable ask.
Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm satisfied with the explanation that we've heard in terms of, this money had been spent anyway, and we just been, we had been dipping into the general fund all this time to cover that. And now, again, back to the earlier comments of some of the other funds, we're now having better transparency into the work that's going on inside of this space. And so, you know, if a calculation is readily accessible, I'd be happy to look at that, if it's like a one-pager with a chart or something. But certainly, I'm not interested in going department by department and tracking time sheets or anything to that degree.
I'm not asking for it right now, because I know there's a budget public hearing, and we've got a couple more slides to do. But I'm going to, I'm, normally I'm not like this, but I want a motion from you all on this matter, because there's different expectations up here. And also, I want to manage expectations that what we give you, I'm not saying we have any problem with it, that it's not there, none of that stuff. I'm not saying that. But it doesn't mean it's going to answer every single question that's out here. And so I want to make sure that we're not going to be directed to go down a rabbit's hole for the sake of going down a rabbit's hole. So please just tell us exactly what you want, that that is going to satisfy the body up here, because this is ultimately who I am accountable for. And if I've met this expectation, that's what I am concerned about for my purpose and Carl's purpose. If we want to make a change in how we do that going forward, again, we can certainly have that conversation. I know it feels like I'm beating a dead horse here, but I'm, again, I've seen enough, I'm trying to manage expectations and use our time wisely.
Council member Black.
So I blame it on the day job, but I've just spent the last two weeks literally immersed in zero-based budgeting. And it's hellacious, and it's cumbersome, and I don't ever want to do it again, but it works. It's transparent, it answers all questions. I would even go so far as to say, it's just, I understand that we don't have this, the staff currently in the processes set up. Is it something that, at the very least, we are looking at? Because it would help answer council member Patterson's questions, council member Valani's questions. It, it works. So is that something that we've looked at? Elements of it that we've looked at?
I would say that's a conversation for another day. I, it's not going to answer it later. There are different ways we could do a budget. I won't be here long-term. I would advise against zero-based budgeting, and the only reason I'm saying that is because that was one of my graduate papers. I think we can get to some of the same types of things that you're thinking about without true zero-based budgeting. I would, I don't even have a name for it, it's probably a name out there that somebody branded, but doing a better job to, to tie the budget to your strategic priorities. Because then we go through the budget conversation next year or the year after, and we say, okay, this program, how does it fit with our strategic priorities? It doesn't fit, it's out the door. Or having to justify that it does fit. Or if it doesn't fit all the way, what changes need to be made? Zero-based, again, it's not that it's impossible, it can be done. I just don't know that it is the most effective way to get to where I think, when I do this, I'm not just talking council, I'm talking to the community too, is look hoping to get towards. But again, that's a conversation, I think, for another day.
And along those lines too, I've only been here five months. So after I go through an audit, and this budget was put together in two and a half, three months, you know, so I'm learning, and the more I learn, the more I know, and the more stuff I see as well. And that's where I can eliminate things and, you know, make recommendations and all of that kind of stuff. It's really been a fire drill, you know, each and every day, you know, since I've been here. So I would expect this process to be a lot smoother. I'd like to be done with it before January even, you know, get it done. So soon as my year-end is reconciled, I know exactly where my final numbers are, which is about September 1st. That's the point, that's your starting point for next year's budget. You know, and then that can easily go forward there. So, but again, I learn a lot, you know, when I beat up every number for audit and that kind of stuff. So more, more to come, and I think you'll see improvements in the process each and every time.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, I'm, unless you really want to, I think I'll save this and just send you guys a link. I was going to talk about just some of the things that we could maybe look at going forward. I was going to walk you through a website. I'm not going to do that tonight for the sake of time. I will send you the link directly and let you play around with one potential way that we could do the budget differently. It's not a different budgeting strategy, it's more along the lines of being able to articulate what we do with the dollars and the resources that we have. As far as budget processes that might get reviewed down the road, we could, as part of some strategic discussions, we could look at what different budget strategies our community's using, and what are the pros and cons of each one? Because you might have zero-based, you might have program-based, you have performance-based, you have...
Priority-based.
Priority-based. There's all kinds of different strategies that we could use, and maybe the right approach for Berkeley down the road is something you'll want to talk with the new city manager. But maybe it's an amalgamation of all the different things, but there's pieces of each. You don't have to follow one specific model. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Other than that, we will turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor and Council.
Council member Baker.
Thank you. As, as a trailer or teaser for the link that you're about to send, could you at least describe, we're not going to double-click inside of it, but can you share like a little bit about what community you're referring to?
Sure, yeah.
What you like about it, or what you'd like us to consider from it? So that when we do receive the link, and the public receives the link, we'll have a bit more of an informed set of lenses about how we should process the information that you're sharing.
So what I was going to send you is a link to last year's budget for the city of Brighton. So I was not involved in last year's, but I was involved in bringing this, they use a product called ClearGov. I was involved in bringing that to Brighton. I think Gretchen has done a heck of a job of optimizing it even further than when we first started using it. And ClearGov has made a lot of operational changes to improve how well it works with BSNA more than when we first brought it on. What you're going to find when you go in there is a much more interactive experience. It is a dynamic experience. And what I mean by that is, is, I mean, you can set it up to be as powerful as, or as limited as you, as you want. But we kind of kept the budget at the high level, so kind of like what Carl was talking about. But beyond just the department level, we would break it down into like personnel and maintenance. And so there'd be like five or six. And then the supplement was the line item in the back, for those that really wanted that detail. But as, what you'll notice when you go through, say, general fund, it's going to tell you, okay, how much did revenues increase as a percent? How much did expenditures increase or decrease as an expense? Again, if we put the time into it, we'll be able to link it to the different capital projects into the capital improvement plan. You'll be able to go through by department and get an idea of what does that department do? What are some of the, it's hard to say performance metrics per se, because we weren't necessarily measuring and making decisions by, based on performance. But for example, we might be tracking trends on construction permits, or how many FOIs the clerk's getting. But basically, being able to track that workload, so that as, if you see, start to see trends, then I can come to city council and say, look, we need some resources here because this trend. We took it as far as implementing our capital improvement plan through that. So all of the capital improvement plan was done through this software. All of the staff did their forms and what have you, and push a button, the capital improvement plan is done. Right? It's not all this paper handling. It would, it's not, city of Brighton's not using it. They have their own six-year forecast that, that we, they use. But they, ClearGov now has a forecasting tool that we could use. I was not able to find a city that I could just easily send you a link. Staff's going to be doing a demo. And then some of the other things I demoed up in Traverse City is, it could help us better, facilitate a better capital improvement discussion around how we prioritize projects. And the last thing, again, we could do, it depends on what you want to invest, and there's other products out there. But if done right, we may be able to better integrate that budget with the strategic planning and be able to draw those connections better and track where we're at on those goals. So if you say a goal is, develop a 10-year forecast that maintains our 20% minimum fund balance policy in light of infrastructure best practices. I can put that into my hub, if you will, and I can track our progress and with milestones and what have you. So it's one example of what I think we could look at that would help both internally and externally create some accountability for the use of tax dollars and utility dollars and solid waste fund dollars and all of that.
Excellent.
It's just one potential.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Council member Henan?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one observation. This is more for the people at home. What they're seeing is the end of a process, not even really the end, this is just a snapshot in time. The budget is always evolving as we learn more and things change. But we had pages and pages of questions and a four-hour work session. So, you know, while it seemed like maybe for a lot of the presentation, we were passive recipients without any questions, we have, you know, gone over this in great detail. And I think this is one of the more active times that we've been in the budget process. So don't take our silence with the questions as just hear rubber stamping a budget.
And all of that dialogue is available on the website as well.
Good point. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's agenda.
Public hearing. Matter of holding a public hearing regarding the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year 2024, '25 and supporting tax rates for the city of Berkeley, Michigan.
Okay, I'm opening the public hearing at 8:46 PM. Same as, as for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Just a couple of things. I've been, as you know...
Name and city of residence for the record.
Bruce Paul, Berkeley.
Thank you.
As you know, I've been approaching council and yourself, Mayor, council members, special concern about the solid waste budget. Internal services is one of those things. When Carl talks about, yeah, in 17, there was an itemization of internal services that were by department. The sum of those services was $55,000. So if at that time, those itemizations were done with kind of realistic numbers, if I add inflation, that number should only be about $83,000 today. Instead, we have 192,000. We're told that last year was 192,000, but it's not. With the budget you approved last year was for $120,000, it's gone up to 192, and no one can tell me why. Same token, you approved zero capital outlay last, for this current budget, and yet, in this proposed budget, there's a $261,000 charge in sanitation for capital outlay. And so what it seems like is that there are an overinflation of expenses in this budget in particular, that is driving this, this desire to add more taxes by way of fees, whether it be in bag tags, or commercial refuse fees, or a continuation of refuse fees in our water bills today. And then those funds are then being moved over to the general fund. Now, the solid waste fund is a special fund. It's designed to take specific income, specific revenue, and have specific expenses. That isn't happening. Applying a 10% rule is not actual dollars. is not actual dollars. The citizens want our sanitation money that we give you for sanitation. We want it to be used for sanitation. We don't want it funding the general fund. That is wrong. And so there's many things about it, including this transferring of a FTE for answering phones. You'd have to have, you got 6,500 residents, 6,500 homeowners here. You'd have to have a call. Everyone has to call once a year and talk to that person for 15 minutes. It's just not logical. And so what I'm asking the city again to do is not just rubber stamp what you're told is this way it is. Instead, I want you to look at the budget, what you're about to approve, and ask yourself, is this what the citizens want? Is this what the citizens deserve? Is this what we expect? And for that, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Joshua Hunter, Berkeley. Mayor, I've written about several of these budget issues. I haven't received a response. They were asked by some council members in the work session, and they weren't, they weren't answered either. I'd like to first talk about the lack of fiscal Q3 actuals. The charter requires in section 9.6, it states at the end of each quarterly period during the fiscal year, and more often if required by the council, the city manager shall submit to the council data showing the relation between the estimated and actual income and expenses to date. And those actuals, we don't have those for Q3. We don't have them in a separate report. We don't have them in, as part of the, the draft budget. Normally, we do, but they were omitted this year. And that's important because as the finance director mentioned, that there's actual activity, like the marijuana revenue that was, that was received less than expected, and also the, the self-insurance costs were coming in lower than expected. But those actuals aren't reflected in the projection of the draft budget. So we, we don't have any visualization into what the current status is, the current position is for the city. And that's important for interpreting, interpreting how the, the next year's budget will go. There's, there's parks and recs revenue from the Bacon Park and Oxford Park cement work for the pathways that was incurred this current fiscal year that isn't part of the projection, and that was over $100,000. So without that information, it's, it's hard to gauge what the position is for the city. Now, my second is regarding 2023 water revenue. Those, if you look at the, the audit report for 2023, the, there's a note by the, by the manager that there was a 8% decrease, decrease in revenue by 2023 fiscal year end. But as you know, there was a 4% increase in the rates across the board for, for water and for fixed rates. So, I mean, that, that's, that's close to $100,000 or $1 million that's missing. Where's, where's the revenue? It hasn't been answered. It's been asked by council members. In the, in the document that was published on the website, the Q and A, the prior city manager said it was answered. It was not. This is a lot of money, and you're expected to pass a budget with, with missing, with missing revenue like this. I, I think, I don't, I don't think this should be passed as is. I think there should be amendments. I know we have to have a, a budget before month, month end, but this needs to be addressed. It's, it's serious, especially given all of our unfunded obligations. So, and I reiterate the comments that are made regarding the internal service revenue, the service funds, that that's, the council should be able to get answers to and information.
Thank you.
Greg D. Ross, Bacon Avenue. I don't have prepared detailed remarks because this is not the time or place, and I'm more big picture. I'm also a former finance director in several jobs. So I have some sympathy for the big picture this year, and that is one of chaos and personnel changes. And I see some glimmers of change, but I just want to say, I am, I want to go on the record saying I'm still watching, and I'm reserving judgment. And I guess since a bit of a tongue lashing a month or so ago, I'm happy to see that there are more questions coming from council. And that's the way it should be. Because if you're asking the right questions, then I don't have to stand up here. So I'll reserve judgment. And I will say that I liked what I saw at 6 o'clock tonight.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Closing the public hearing at 8:54 PM. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R1324. Matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, adopting the annual budget for the 2024-25 fiscal year and acknowledgement of the 2025-26 budget projections.
Is there a motion to approve R1324?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Johnson or Mr. Geiser, do you have anything you want to add?
Yep, just one last comment. The only edit that we discussed at the workshop was the increasing the city manager department by $50,000 and reducing the contribution to the Parks and Rec Fund because of they had sufficient fund balance to absorb it. So outside of that, it's exactly as it was that we discussed in the workshop. So general fund still has the zero, Parks and Rec Fund's still in great shape, but that was the only edit to the document that we discussed.
Okay, thank you. Discussion from council? Ms. Mitchell?
I have discussion.
Yeah, okay.
So, I kind of wrote some, and I'm going to just kind of read it and go from there. So when I ran for my seat for council last fall, I ran with the expressed intent to not only serve as an honest, transparent representative of the city of Berkeley, but to help protect and enhance what we all love so much about this community of ours, while also standing strong as a responsible steward of our tax dollars. Each citizen contributes towards our budget every year. I take this role very seriously like my colleagues do. I can tell you that I poured through every single line item, hours and hours on this budget this year. I don't even know if my fine-tooth comb is fine enough how many hours I spent on it, trying to get the understanding. I went to the mayor's academy. I learned about budgets. I learned about what is important to our directors, to our staff, these unfunded mandates. We keep talking about that we can't do much about. We are told we have to. They're unfunded, right? So I went through all of that. When the coming year's budget was first presented, I was excited. It was about eight weeks ago, and I was like, I can take what I learned, take my understanding, and from the individual line items I was going to be asked. I was excited. I was to consider and approve, and I did my due diligence. I reviewed the entire budget in great detail, much of which I fully support. I support our Parks and Rec. I support our library. I support public safety, all of the services we can have. However, I had a list of questions seeking insight, explanation, and justification for, among other things, our city's allocations of implementation of services such as the solid waste, water and sewer, major and minor streets, prior reduction in city services, and shifting of a staff person position from one department to another, all in effort to gain that firm understanding for the rationale behind the certain line items that we reviewed. In all, these questions were asked a total of four times, various forums, various settings. These questions were not meant to be overly scrutinized details, undermine trust from anybody in our staff, or to cause hardship in pursuant of explanations. However, there's still many that I don't have answers to, and I was simply seeking the rationale for the numbers behind some of these items. Asking the questions, I would have seen to be the bare minimum requirement as we consider and approve our city's budget. A budget, again, I would really like to approve because I am highly supportive of the parks, the recreation, our library, Department of Public Works, Department of Public Safety, and a variety of our other municipal services. But without a clear understanding of how proposed spending and spending increases come about, how can I expect to make an informed decision and vote in favor of a budget where we, so many large unknowns still exist? How can I be asked to vote blindly, vote blindly on unexplained line items that are significant and have a direct impact on each of Berkeley residents' pocketbook? I cannot, and doing so greatly undermine the trust of the citizens of Berkeley. If I cannot explain to my neighbors how their tax dollars are being spent, then how can I consider my respel, myself, a responsible steward, acting honestly on their behalf? These are the questions I've been grappling for the last few weeks. Now it's, I mean, we're going to call the vote, and I've come to the conclusion that the most responsible action to take tonight is for me to cast a no vote on this proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R1324.
Hannon?
Yes.
Patterson?
No.
Vellani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
No.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. R1324 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R1424. Matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, approving the 2024-25 through 2029-2030 capital improvements plan of the city of Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve R1424?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Hannon?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Who's up? Mr. Geiser?
I had zero involvement with this plan, so I have a hard time introducing it and telling you what's in here. I don't know if, Kristin, are you able to introduce the CIP resolution? Or Carl? One of you guys?
Thank you.
Well, sure. So again, this is the capital plan, CIP plan that we discussed in detail at the workshop. No changes whatsoever from the workshop. And most of the overview that we went through, there's, you know, very minimal purchases in there. And again, you're only focused on, year one is tied to the budget that we just passed, and then the other years are, I've incorporated year two into the year two budget, and then after that, it's really just pretty much listings, and we tried to detail out year by year what we think we could afford. But the reality is, there's more needs than, than funds available, and those will be adjusted annually. To the extent we expand our budget to a three-year, four-year, five-year budget, then each of those years will be balanced out so that we know exactly where we are. As of right now, the first two years are budgeted and funded in the document that was just passed.
Thank you. Any public input?
Just to Carl's point, just the one thing I would add, as he already talked about, those out years get to be very cloudy. You know, we talked about developing a long-term financial forecast. That's what's going to help us better understand
Yes.
what those out years mean. And most of the time, most communities put everything in that last couple of years, hoping they're going to get it all, and it's all going to work out. Nine times out of 10, that's not the case. So we'll be able to have better conversations about, okay, this project you want to do in year six, there's 15 things ahead of it that's more important. It's just not going to happen. We have to figure out a different way to do it.
And what I'm used to, one last comment. What I'm used to doing is having a meeting with you before now. You know, so this is a December-January meeting of, here's what's in the proposed CIP plan, and solicit your input. You know, usually, city manager leads that discussion. Again, that way we can hear directly from you of, why are we doing, why are we buying this? Why are we doing that? And again, if your priorities are different than what we presented, that's the time, you know, as opposed to now. So.
Yes, thank you for that additional information. Any public input on this? Discussion from council?
I just want to add, not every item on here is being purchased either. So it is a plan. If somebody's, somebody's looking at it, 2000, like 26, 27, 20, 29, 30, like we're not buying all of it. I just want to make that clear.
Correct, yes. Year one is the only year that's in the budget.
Any other, Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Can you just briefly kind of describe the process that the city has taken and does take to prepare this kind of materials, like, you know, goes through planning commission and other kinds of forums, so that at least these aren't just made up numbers. They are actually real, you know, projections of the expected expenditures as we look at the age of our assets and the needs of the community. That helps inform this type of plan. And as noted, only year one is, is in the actual budget. The rest of this is just a forecast of where we think it's going. Any additional insight you could share about that process?
Yeah, so again, why are we even approving this? The, I think it's the Building Enabling Act, which is kind of a crazy place for it. It requires you to state your intentions, basically, for the next seven years so that your planning commission can understand your expectations when they're working on zoning and rezoning and all of that kind of stuff. The reality is, what we on the finance side slash operations side is, we look at that and try to plan, given the dollars that we have, what our needs are. So it's a living, breathing document, i.e., you know, passing the one year. So a year ago, we would have said, hey, we're going to do, you know, the one water line and the one road or whatever, and it's going to cost us $2 million. And this year, when we went to update the quotes for this year's budget, oh, by the way, it's now $3 million. You know, so again, that, those are the kind of things that happen, or the HVAC was $1,008, and now it's $2,008, you know, those kind of things. So it's needs, and then it's estimates. And again, next year, we hope some of those estimates have dropped back down, you know, and then if, if that's the case, we can push some stuff forward and be able to do additional things, or we get additional revenues from some other source or a grant or whatever else. But this is just kind of a, a tool to help us lay out what our needs are. So again, not for, for ourselves and for the public to see, here's what it is. So if it says my, you know, Oak Street's going to be done in, in six years from now, that doesn't mean Oak Street's going to get done six years from now. It means we hope Oak Street can get done six years from now, and we think it's going to cost this, but six years from now, it could be triple that, or, or Oak Street may fall apart two years earlier, we may have done it, you know. So that's really what this is. Equipment has a life on it, so we try to put the, the lives of the equipment there. You know, a fire truck's going to die in five or six years, so we can start putting money aside and planning for it, et cetera. Those, that's what we use this tool for.
Nice, thank you. So this is a quick follow-up. So those of us that are familiar with the planning commission and their annual processes of how they work on things, and those of us who are fans and either come and attend in person or watch them on TV, the community is familiar with this process, and it has had many, many sets of eyes and many sets of fingers to help inform, again, what are basically intentions and hopes, but at least those are informed intentions and hopes. Is that...
Yep, I gave a presentation to them as well. So they, they heard the same spiel.
Make it clear that these aren't just made up. It's been, there's a rigorous process around it. Goes through a formal body, and, and we use that to help inform what, what it is that we're going to do in, in the year ahead.
And the key is, this is as of today, this is our intention. Tomorrow, literally tomorrow, it can change.
That's right.
Living, breathing tool.
Will keeps turning. Thank you very much.
Exactly, sure.
Carl, go ahead and just stay up there for the next two. We've got two more finance items. Just stay up.
Okay, yeah, I'll give my stack.
Okay. And, yeah, I just want to, we can do a lot better with this document, and we've discussed that some, but, you know, not just the what, but the why, and the most important missing part of the priorities, especially important when we, when our needs are greater than the revenues we have. But there's no, you know, year three or four or five, there's no prioritization out there. So, you know, it's, well, which ones of these are we going to pick? So looking at the ClearGov tool that you had shared a link to earlier, that was a good level of detail that I'm ultimately looking for. You know, it doesn't have to be excruciating detail, but we do, you know, really need to get some more detail in here and, and prioritization.
And I would add, Councilmember Hannon, just tying it again to the strategic plan and the, you know, public input that we get through a survey, then, you know, it, it anchors it and shows a clear path that's need-based, priority-based, which, again, you know, that's the solid thing to fall back on. Any other discussion from...
And I also meant to add, I, I don't expect overnight changes, but I do expect incremental and start making progress.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R1424.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vellani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. R1424 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R1524. Matter of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, setting the residential and commercial service fee for the collection and disposal of solid waste effective July 1st, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve R1524?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker.
So what this is, is you're, in, in December, you passed the resolution setting our current solid waste fees. That motion said those fees expire June 30, 2024, unless... solid waste fees. That motion said those fees expire June 30, 2024, unless renewed. I think it was renewed, rejoiced, or whatever. There, there's some bunch of Rs in there. So with those set to expire, what you have before you are those same rates, no changes whatsoever to any of the solid waste rates, before you, again, to be renewed for the next fiscal year, beginning July 1, ending June 30, 2025.
Public input? Discussion from council? Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R 1524.
Vlani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The resolution has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number eight on tonight's regular agenda.
Resolution number R 1624, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, setting the various rates for water and sewer services effective July 1, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve R 1624?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henon?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Johnson?
I know you're tired of me already. One more, one more to this. The same theory behind the solid waste rates, these were not set to expire. However, with the need in the Water and Sewer Fund and following our plan that we discussed last year, another 10% to the variable rates, as we discussed in the presentation. So this is a two or three-page resolution with a bunch of different rates. The only changes were the ones in 1-10 on page one, the water service fee and the sewer service fee. Those are the two variable costs, and each of those are up 10% from the previous year. That's the only change in the rates.
Thank you. Any public input? Discussion from council? Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, um, before the unfunded lead line mandates, we had healthy reserves in here if there was an emergency. And now we'll be spending down to zero. So if we have an emergency, what funds are we going to tap into, to cover that?
Well, so what drives any available funds is capital. So if you recall at the workshop, we talked about, we're basically putting the projects on hold for a year, because we actually, we're in a million-dollar hole at the end of last year. So through June of '24, our current fiscal year, this will get us back out of that hole, and we should have positive cash. What has been budgeted for next year is basically to spend all that again. So if something happens, the, the, the purpose of the reserves are so that, you hear about the big sinkholes and everything else that cost millions and millions of dollars. Well, we can issue debt to pay for those, but debt takes 60 days, 90 days to get issued. So we just let it run or leave a big hole there for 90 days. That's the purpose for the cash reserves. Unfortunately, we've got the lead line mandates that said, you must do it, and you must do it now. So yes, it's an uncomfortable feeling. We should have, I mean, we set the reserves there for a reason. We, we set, I think, 2 million. The council policy is 2 million in working capital. Our working capital is negative, you know? So that's the reality. The only way to generate those reserves are 20, 30, 40% increase in rates, and I don't think that's a, I wouldn't recommend that right now. Only been here a few months. I don't want to run out of here real quick, so.
I remember last year calculating what the increase would have needed to be to cover all of this, and it was just an untenable amount of increase in the water rates. If we came down to that emergency, would we be able to borrow the money from the general funds reserves?
Yes, you're, the, the tricky thing is loaning water and sewer money, legally restricted money out, coming in, there's no restrictions whatsoever, you know? So that's a general operating thing. It's a loan, usually documented by a formal resolution of the, the governing body with or without interest, repayment terms, blah, 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 you know? So yes, you could definitely do that. But again, if the capital project hasn't started, or the sewer lining, you know, those are major things. We could always defer those or put those on hold and, and manage it accordingly. And again, our voters were gracious enough to pass that infrastructure millage of $1,400,000. Again, that is what's helping us even stay to the minimal level that we're at, or zero level that we're at. So that's really the only way to manage it.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R 1624.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vlani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. R 1624 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number nine on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M 4924, matter of awarding a five-year, three-year contract with two one-year city renewal options, professional services contract for annual audit services to Andrews Hooper Pavlik, beginning for the fiscal year, ending June 30, 2024 through June 30, 2029. The total contract over the five years totals $225,000,000, charged to the various funds and departments, budgeted in account 807-000.
Is there a motion to approve M 4924?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Black?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henon. Mr. Johnson?
So the, the mayor and council decided last year, after last year's audit, to send out RFPs for a new audit firm. I think the new audit firms have talked to the construction industry, because all of their rates are up 40 to 50% as well. It's kind of ridiculous. The five responses that we have, I listed it as part of the package. I've worked personally with all of them, except for Manor, Costerian, they're out of Lansing, but they are a large, reputable, local, or local, Michigan-based firm out of the Lansing area. So all five are qualified, and that being the case, I obviously would go with the lowest bidder. That would be my recommendation. It's important to remember, though, that this is a, the auditors are independent auditors who are meant to come in and take a look at, you know, that fast-talking guy and that city manager guy, to make sure that those numbers we present in the audit are true and accurate, and look at our internal controls. So they work for you. This is our recommendation, though. We, we basically vet it for you, but the decision is yours.
Thank you. Any public comment? Discussion from council? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just more of a comment. I do appreciate the fact that our process enables slash requires this kind of thing to occur. I think always having somebody else, an independent third party, to look, look everything over and give it, you know, an assessment. I can't say a clean bill of health, although we've had a pretty good track record of all of that over the years. I think it's fundamental to the trust in the actual expenditures of what we've been doing on behalf of the residents to further our infrastructure, provide high-quality services and things. So audits don't sound like a lot of fun, especially, you know, I haven't had the pleasure of going through an IRS one. Please don't listen to me with that universe. But having this here before us is another demonstration of not only doing the right thing, but providing accurate and honest numbers for the public to, to, to see and review. You know, it's hard to get excited about having an audit, but I think, I think we're doing the right thing tonight, and I'm pleased with the recommendation.
Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Will this auditor follow the same timeline as previous auditors?
The, I believe in the audit RFP, I wrote that they should be starting mid, beginning of, middle of September, because I usually have the records done within 60 days after year-end. And at that point, I'll be coming to you with a preliminary of, here's where it is. I'm, I usually don't have any audit adjustments whatsoever. So they're usually out in field one or two weeks, and then they get like a month finalized the report. So I would expect it to be much sooner than, than what it was last year. But that's what the audit RFP says.
Any other questions from council or discussion? So I have a question. This is a five-year contract, three years, and then two one-year renewals.
Correct.
Is there, do they come before us again, like after the three years for that first one-year renewal? Is this brought to council again, then, to renew, or how does that mechanism work?
It's a city option to renew. So without it coming before you to
Okay.
approve the additional year at that fee, it would expire.
Okay. I don't love five-year things.
Nothing wrong with that.
It's my personal
Yeah.
preference.
And again, with those renewals, the auditors, you know, they, they like, they invest a lot in the first years or so, you know, learning us, and then that's where they like a little bit of time on it. But with those two additional years, they're, they're good with that.
Okay. Okay.
But it is three years. You know, we don't have to do
Right.
extra two years if we're unsatisfied.
Correct. And there is an opt-out, right?
Oh, for, with anything, if we don't, if they don't provide the services requested.
Sure, okay.
We, you know, there's, it can always be terminated.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other, just Councilmember Vlani?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the prices on here for '27 and '28, which would be the one-year extensions, those are locked in?
They quoted us for all five years, each of the firms, yeah.
So I will, as someone who deals with a lot of vendor contracts at work, I will say that, as he mentioned, that there's been significant price increases. One of the, the value propositions of having those contract extensions is that we have guaranteed pricing locked in. So if we are happy with the services that we're getting, it can be a significant cost savings to be able to stay with the same vendor.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion from council? Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M 4924.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vlani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed.
Thank you all for your considerable time tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R 1724, matter of considering a resolution in support of and funding commitment of the application for the SEMCOG Planning Assistance Program.
Is there a motion to approve M, oh, sorry, R 1724?
So moved.
Support?
Dealer's choice.
Okay, motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Vlani. Ms. Kapilansky, so nice to see you. Way to hang in there.
Yeah, this was very entertaining. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We're ending the meeting on a very positive note. I'm seeking your support for a resolution to apply for a grant from SEMCOG for their Planning Assistance Program. As we've seen, the area of Coolidge around Dorothea kind of come to life over the last couple of years. We thought that this would be a great candidate for a placemaking opportunity in the right-of-way there. Like I'd said, there's a lot of increased vibrancy there. Our master plan also talks about adding additional public plazas in the downtown area, so we would hit the mark under that space as well. And then, if you'll all recall, the school is doing quite a bit of work, or has quite a bit of work planned, just adjacent to there. So it would capitalize on that additional activity as well. We would like to pursue several different concepts, and then determine which way the community would like to go. I did reach out to HRC, and I think we could get a couple different concepts with a budget of about $10,000. So that's what we'll be asking SEMCOG for. There's an 18% match required, and the DDA has agreed to support that. So thank you to them as well. And this would be for a long-term placemaking plan. So we could be talking about pavement changes and things like that, things that are really going to require more significant investment. And the idea is that we would get the concepts and design ready, so that we can move forward with applying for implementation grants, which often require those sorts of things, and a budget to be in place. So this would be step one for that long-term project. However, I wanted to take this opportunity to mention something we're working on for this particular space for the short term. MDOT is also offering placemaking grants right now. They do not require any match. So Mike McGinnis and I have kind of split the work here. I'm working on the SEMCOG grant. He is working on the MDOT grant, and that would be for more temporary improvements, like planters and street furniture, and more mobile elements that we could swap in and out if we needed or wanted to move forward with a more long-term plan. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to let council know we're working on that, too.
Thank you. It's a great update. Any public input? Discussion from council? Councilmember Patterson?
I just want to thank both of you for looking into these grants and bringing them forward to us. Do you have a vision of what it would look like, or still too early to tell? Like, I'm just?
I think it's, it's still too early. So if we were to get this SEMCOG grant, it would allow us to lay out that vision and see what it would truly look like.
Thank you, guys, again.
Councilmember Baker?
Uh, thank you. And, and thanks to you both for the partnership and collaboration in this. And, and, you know, the most fundamental aspect of this would obviously be the potential closure of that street to vehicle traffic, so that it'd be safe for pedestrians to gather and do awesome things together. So, you know, as far as the most rudimentary of visions, it would at least be, you know, closed off, so that it's a safe space for folks to gather and have a great time. But then, as you've, as you've described so well, you know, all the, all the rest of it is yet to come. And I appreciate the, um, community engagement that you've, you've thought through and, and proposed as part of helping us collectively as a community reach a, a final decision down the road, for sure. And this is, you know, first step, uh, first step on the, you know, easing on down the road. So that'll be awesome.
Thanks.
Councilmember Black?
Kristin, is there a local example of a city that did something like this, something that we could visit or take a look at, or use as an example?
You know, I don't have anything offhand. The DDA did a couple concepts for the Robina right-of-way, and if you'll recall, that right-of-way is much wider than Dorothea here, so it didn't contemplate closing the road or anything. But they did a similar project a couple years ago, and kind of went through some different concepts. And we're able to apply for some of those improvements currently through the Oakland County's ARPA funds, and Mike can talk more about that, because he's dealing with that side of things. But we would be hoping to follow a similar process. I don't have an example of a stub, road closure, or areas where there was a stub, and they used the, the existing right-of-way to try to develop something. But we could look at that as part of this grant opportunity if we were to get it.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R 1724.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vlani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The resolu, or, sorry, the, yeah, the resolution has passed. Ms. Mitchell, where do we begin?
Councilmember Henon.
Great.
All right, well, um, going back to the budget, I want to bring up, is there a desire to bring up a motion to ask for more information before we
Sure.
close out on business?
Yeah, I can make a motion. Can I make a motion? It's, all right. It's, I'll just preface, it's from my email that I sent. So the most, the motion would be to seek additional information, answering specific questions as to what the breakdown of internal services are, to come up with the allocations from each account, and how they are calculated and allocated to each department role per account, ballpark figures as they are coming from, providing any working documents that show where these numbers are going, and what is the cause for the increase since fiscal year 1718, when they were line items. It's my motion.
Second that motion?
Support, okay. Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Henon. Is this a all-in-favor say, or are you calling the roll on this?
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I do want to be clear, I'm not, how much detail we're looking for. The documents that already exist. If, if the documents don't exist, I don't want to create additional work. And I want to make sure that we're clear on that.
And likewise, I, I'm not asking for, you know, a time study to come in, or, I don't know what, the word you called, it wasn't a time study.
A, a cost allocation study.
Yeah, I still didn't.
If I could, this is, this is exactly a case of why I'm asking for a motion, because what Councilmember Henon just said
Right.
is not what that motion says.
Correct, yes.
So that's why I'm asking for clarity, because those are two different expectations, at least from what I'm hearing. I don't know if...
Yes.
So maybe, Carl, do you want to simplify this?
The, the document that, that I usually prepare, that would, would be prepared, is a one-page summary that would show the costs and the percentage that's being allocated that comes up in total to the charges that were included in the budget. So it's a one-page Excel sheet with a few columns.
And you have that easily available?
Again, I'll have to look to see what it is, and if it doesn't exist...
It's not going to take you weeks and weeks.
No, but again, what, what you read, you know, and supporting documents and blah, 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 what I envision, what usually exists...
No, I said if you have them, maybe, it's in the email, I, I can...
Yeah. So, so what this is, is it's a summary of the costs that
For the internal services.
For the, yeah, that, that support the internal services allocation, yeah. And like I say, it's, it's a one-page summary of where those amounts come from. That's what I would envision.
Is that?
So
Remake the motion?
Restate the motion? Or what, what else?
We can restate the motion, that's fine. I just, again, I'm trying not to be difficult here.
No, this is good.
What Councilmember Henon said was very clear to me what was being asked, and the discussion here was very clear to me what was being asked. But the original motion, But the original motion and then the email does not offer that clarity. So my request would be, if there is agreement in what Councilmember Henan is saying, then I would just retract the motion and just say what he said. And that gets us what we need. But if the ask is for more than what Councilmember Henan is saying, that's what I'm trying to get certainty on. Because what that motion is saying is a lot more detailed than what Carl was describing.
So let's retract the motion. Are you all right with retracting?
Sure, if we have.
So how do you retract a motion?
It's been a while.
Or is it easier to amend?
Amend a motion, but can we have further discussion first? Because I think what I'm asking for is how are we getting those numbers?
The methodology.
The methodology. I think Councilmember Black said last, show the math. How are we getting those numbers? And I think that what Carl provides will show us those numbers. So that would be a worksheet, is that what you're asking for as well?
Well, I think that question has already been answered in that you.
I'm looking for percentages like you said you might have.
We're using the, let's use the clerk's office as an example. Someone reached out to the clerk's office, what percentage do you think you spend on this? And that's what gets fed in. You don't know if that, we do that here, but that's how it's been done.
If it doesn't exist, that's what you will get from me to support those numbers.
So 10% comes from clerk, 10% comes from city manager?
Yes.
Whatever the numbers are to equal that.
It will be, it will be a summary schedule supporting the allocations in the budget, the internal allocations.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to go down to the penny, that's.
Oh, yeah, no, it's.
It's probably not possible. But is that motion?
Just as a point of, just questioning the.
Yeah.
I, at most, I'm comfortable with a one-pager that highlights, as you've described, to support the numbers that are in the current budget. As part of, perhaps in prior communications, and you mentioned it again, going all the way back to 2017 when they were itemized, then it stopped. But I'm not, what I'm not completely in support of is going back in time to all those other years and doing a true-up year over year over year over year. What we're talking about is this current, this upcoming fiscal year that we've just voted on to understand, to, if, in the budget presentation earlier, we had those pie charts, which double-clicked inside of a single number to say, here's how that pie chart. So if the one-pager is the equivalent of a pie chart showing how the different departments contribute to, or, you know, consume these funds, then I would be in support of that because I believe that that's eminently available. If it's more than that, if it's like looking at a time study and going back to prior fiscal years to try to true that up to show the trend over time and all that kind of stuff, that's, I don't know that that was the.
Again, I thought what I heard was support for the 2425 internal services allocations to the various funds, the summary that comes up with those numbers, the detailed summary that goes over those numbers.
I would be heading to second.
Okay, timeout, so, yes, I hear.
That's what I thought my motion was, but maybe I said it.
No, but are, Nate, are we all good now on what's before us?
You need to reread a motion.
Or just?
I mean, if Carl's comfortable, I just hear a lot of ambiguity, and I will let you and Carl figure this out.
Okay. How is council feeling about what Carl has just stated? Do we need?
That is exactly what I'm looking for.
Okay, so.
You're offering that as a friendly amendment to.
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Because I don't know how to word that.
And that's as far as I want to go.
Okay.
There will, people are still going to question it, no matter how, what level of detail we go to. We eventually have to move on. So this is the level of detail, one year, this specific thing. I'm comfortable, I think this builds trust. Some people aren't going to trust us anyway. But I think this gets us the level of detail that some of us are looking for.
Okay, so, original.
Friendly amendment.
Yes.
You're fine with that?
Agreed upon. Second with Councilmember Henan. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on this. What's before us?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, the motion has passed. Okay. Councilmember Henan.
All right, the Tree Board, they will meet on Tuesday, June 28. And the Zoning Board will meet Monday, June 10. They have two cases, one is that postponed generator case, and another is a dimensional variance case. And then, on Thursday last week, I was able to attend the Great Lakes Leadership Academy Local Government Leadership Intensive Program. It was a, normally their programs take nine days or longer to complete. They compressed it down into one day, held in Lansing. And just giving a taste of the kind of leadership training they offered. You know, they helped participants work through a specific leadership challenge and to improve their skills. I found it very valuable. I'm considering applying for the longer-term thing, I found it so valuable, and also have some literature for anyone that's interested. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
The Committee for Technology and Engagement is looking forward to bringing in our new members on one July. And I want to thank Director Flora for all of her outstanding work to get us there. So very excited to be a liaison for that as we finally get moving in the right direction. Do want to say that, you know, what happened at Berkeley Days was very unfortunate. And what was also unfortunate was some of the things that were posted on social media, so much so that I've decided to take a social media break. And I certainly encourage everyone to do so, I find myself much more productive. And it's been a good thing for me. Last thing I'll say is that, you know, D-Day is known as the greatest military operation of all time and an operation that changed the world. And everyone would be very surprised to know that it was not particularly well-planned, nor was it planned with a great deal of detail. But what they did do was keep it simple. So I will say that there are good things happen when you keep things simple. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson?
The Beautification Committee will meet the 22nd, which is two days from now, at 6:30 PM. I did have a question about staff liaison, does anybody, I don't know who that is, is there? Can I just send you an email, is it you now?
It might be me, I'm not going to be there, I, it's.
I'll send an email, they just had some questions about planting trees and maybe a mural on the side of the community center. I told Dan about it. But I'll send you an email just so I can share that back with them. The next Planning Commission meeting is May 28, 2024. And there is still time to review the zoning draft rewrite. So please, if you haven't sent your comments in, they are looking for those. And then, at Taste of Berkeley, Betty Smith, we were able to sing "Happy Birthday" to her. It was her 89th young birthday. If you don't know her, reach out and meet her. She is a phenomenal volunteer, everything Berkeley, she is, I don't want to say the grandma of Berkeley, but she is the grandma or great-grandma of Berkeley. She is still serving on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I had a pleasure meeting her there. So if you ever get a chance to meet her or live your life like Betty Smith. And that is all. For those who have served and paid the ultimate price, Memorial Day is special to all of us, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Environmental Advisory Committee has a meeting this Thursday at 6:30 PM on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. Thanks to all those who came out on Sunday for the native plant sale that they had. And the Berkeley Area Chamber is looking for volunteers for the upcoming Art Bash on June 8. So if you are interested in lending a hand or some muscle, please reach out, and we will get you connected to them.
Thank you. Mayor Procham Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Library Board will meet Wednesday, June 26, at 7:00 PM at the library. A big thank you to Director Church and the friends who had their book sale over the weekend. It was an incredible success and a lot of hard work went into it. So thank you, and to thank everybody that took part in that. And then, the next Parks and Rec Advisory Meeting will meet on, or will be on June 13 at 7:00 PM at the community center. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Hey, that's me, thank you. Historical Committee meets tomorrow at 7:00 PM. And they'd like to thank Cana Lutheran Church on Coolidge, on Catalpa. They have lent a comprehensive set of documents and photographs of their entire history of that facility in the neighboring region. And they're, the committee's in the process of scanning all of that stuff in and archiving it and stuff like that. For those of you who find that kind of stuff interesting, the committee has no cap on the number of members that are allowed to officially join. Things like preserving the history of our city for future generations to understand and learn from appeals to you. Please see the city website for the application on how to volunteer for that esteemed, fantastic group. And for more information, berkeleyhistory.com. Downtown Development Authority, DDA, met last Wednesday. There are several mural applications that are in process, that are working their way through the machinery here. Very excited to continue the art scene in our downtown. Congratulations to all who were able to participate or even more so to help support May the 4th. May the 4th be with you. It was a daytime event this time rather than on a Thursday evening. It was a tremendous success, it was cool to see all the people walking around in their Darth Vader outfits. And kudos to all the participating businesses who helped distribute Pez dispensers and fun stuff like that, that was really awesome. Let's see, a bunch of other stuff, I'll skip ahead. Tied to the June 8 Art Bash is the launch of the Berkeley Outdoor Social Scene, AKA The Boss. So look for more information coming out on that as we get closer to it. Essentially, it's a, it's a part of our downtown that, you know, if you purchase a particular beverage from one of the participating businesses, you can carry it around with you within the parameters, within the perimeter that's defined through appropriate signage and things. So that's fantastic. And for more information that I just skipped over, please visit downtownberkeley.com. And then, just really briefly, Mary Landrew once said, "A budget should reflect the values and priorities of our nation and its people." And what I think we've heard tonight is how this, we exemplify that here in our community. And we're, we have, we had six of our department heads here in this room this evening for the majority of it. And they and their colleagues have put a tremendous amount of work into helping define what the agenda is based on the needs of our community and their staff and continuing to advance the city, given the constraints that we have. I love that idea about keeping it simple. I love the approach to pivot on that, that Carl has brought to us with looking at the budget. You got to start with the simple, then you can dig deep where you need to. But, you know, to be able to have that effective narrative is hard to do, right? It's really easy to give somebody like 200 pages of stuff, but it's really hard to distill that to a couple of paragraphs and still get the essence of it. And so that's to be commended for all of our, all of our amazing leaders that do such great work for our city. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, please hug somebody you love, they need it, and you probably do, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Geinzer?
I have nothing this evening.
Imagine that. Attorney Crist?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, then it's me. Just a moment, and a couple of comments about Berkeley Days. Many, many hours went into the planning of this year's event, and that included safety planning. The Berkeley Days Committee spent countless hours attending conferences all over the state on safety. They spent time talking with other municipalities about their carnivals and what worked for them, what didn't work. And they compiled all that information, and they put forth their absolute best plan for this year. In spite of that, things didn't go 100% the way we would have liked them to. But what I would like to ask everyone is to give the Berkeley Days Committee and Public Safety, excuse me, some patience and time so that they can compile their reports. Information is still being verified. The after-action report by Public Safety is, will be forthcoming. We do after-action reports on all of our events. But this takes time in order to, again, to verify information. Because the worst thing you can do is to create speculation, and that just feeds the rumor mill. We want accuracy. And I'm asking the community to please give our Public Safety and our Berkeley Days Community time to do that. Thank you. As I mentioned earlier this evening, I was part of the tour that Congresswoman Stevens hosted at the Water Works Park in Detroit, which is a Gleewa operation. And Communications Director Flora was there, as was Director Young from DPW, and I got to carpool with them. But this, I had never toured a water treatment facility, and this place was amazing. They produce 240 million gallons of water every day. And just to give you a little bit of context, Berkeley uses about a million a day. And just all the levels, we went to each portion of the Water Works Park and learned about how the water's treated and the safety measures they have in place, and why certain chemicals are added to the water, and how other measures that they use to make sure that we have clean, safe drinking water. You know, we have our coffee in the morning, we take a shower, we flush the toilet, we turn on the tap. And, I don't know, I take that for granted, but I have a new appreciation now for everything that goes into that. And I'm grateful that Congresswoman Stevens put this together and that she included so many municipalities. And again, I will say that lead service lines were quite the topic of conversation. We are all struggling with that. But I'm hopeful that the grant money that we've applied for absolutely, absolutely will come through and that some other programs or ways that municipalities are, I'm going to say forced, because we are, to do this, that we have some other resources that we can draw upon to comply with this. And then, lastly, I don't know if people may be aware of this Berkeley Has Heart program that is, I think it's a chamber initiative. And I was at Perch on Coolidge the other day, I love that store, and I saw these cards on the counter, and I picked one up. And I didn't really know a whole lot about it, it's a photography thing, and it's a contest. But it's meant to bring events and new community photography together. Now, the contest is closed, so don't grab your camera and run around taking pictures. But I mention it because when I flipped the card over and actually started reading about it, I'm going to go a little Councilmember Baker on you, and, but not to that extent, so don't worry. But I want to read this. "Why Berkeley Has Heart." "While 12 Mile and Coolidge are the main arteries running through Berkeley, Berkeley has heart because of the people. The people are the oxygen that sustains the city, pumping their energy through its circulatory system. Just as a heart cannot function without oxygen, a city cannot function without people." And I mean, I could go on, but I won't. But I just thought about that, and I thought about our community. And our motto is, "We care." But I also will go one further and say that Berkeley does have heart. And even though we don't always agree, and we don't always see eye to eye on things, I'm encouraged by the emerging and continuing respect that we have for one another in our various viewpoints. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The motion made by Councilmember Patterson, supported by all, but I'll say Councilmember Valani. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, sorry, Monday, May 20, 24 meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.